Values and kids.
He heard it at the meeting and he said, oh wow.
Everything you could imagine, everything that got them there.
Yeah, I mean, right. You think if you're like a, that's a perfect place to go sell your product, right?
Good evening. Welcome to the September third, two thousand twenty-five Planning Commission meeting. Call the roll.
Baumann.
Yes.
Iverson.
Yes.
Johnson. Kibler.
Here.
Menham.
Here.
Offredal.
Here.
Pontanila.
Here.
Trudeau.
Here.
Wolf. Amick.
Yes.
Doctor.
Yes.
Eriksen. Ziegler.
Yes.
We have a quorum.
That we have a quorum, let's stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, moving on to the agenda item number four, the approval of the June twenty twenty-five regular meeting minutes. As most of you guys do remember, we did not have a quorum last month for the July meeting, so we're gonna have an approval of the June twenty twenty-five regular meeting minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion to approve by Commissioner Kibler, second by Vice Chair Baumann. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the discussion and we'll call the roll.
Baumann.
Yes.
Iverson.
Yes.
Kibler.
Yes.
Menham.
Yes.
Offredal.
Yes.
Pontanila.
Yes.
Trudeau.
Yes.
Amick.
Yes.
Doctor.
Yes.
Ziegler.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, moving on with that, as you can see, we got quite, quite a few agenda items today, so we'll move right along. Agenda item five point one. Battleground edition lot eleven easement vacation, public hearing request by Chad Shervin, representing Monica Porterfield, owner for an easement vacation for an unused utilities easement on the property zoned MH, manufactured home district. The legal description for the property is lot eleven battleground addition to the city of Minot. The property address is nine hundred sixty-third Avenue Northeast. With that, we'll turn it over to city, city, city staff for findings and report.
Chairman Offredal, members of the commission. As you can see here, the subject property is bound in black with the six hundred foot notification area denoted in pink. This property is located in northeast Minot's extraterritorial zoning jurisdiction. They are proposing the vacation of a utility easement. Here you can see the vacation exhibit as provided by their land surveyor. Just that hashed section right in lot eleven is the requested easement to be vacated. None of the rest of the easements on any of the other properties are affected. It's only within this subject property they are asking for the vacation. Here you can see the zoning map. The current property zoning is MH manufactured home district. There is also ag, R-one, single family and rural residential districts adjacent. The subject property is designated as rural residential in the city's comprehensive future, comprehensive plans, future land use map. Adjacent is also agricultural and open space designation. Here we can see the subject property. This is, the photo on left is facing east down sixty-third Avenue Northeast. The photo on the right is facing south towards the subject property, the current structure on the subject property. Facing north, north, you can see the backyard of the property across sixty-third Avenue Northeast and facing right, you are looking, on the right side, you are facing west, looking down sixty-third Avenue Northeast. Here is staff finding of fact, it can be found in staff's written report. The planning commission has the authority to hear the case and provide a recommendation to the city council on whether the pre, whether the vacation should be approved with or without conditions or denied. Staff recommends that the planning commission adopt staff finding of fact and recommend city council approve the petition for vacation of this easement. And with that, I will stand for questions.
Hey, any questions for city staff, Vice Chair Baumann?
Just for myself and for maybe the general public, can you talk about why someone would want to vacate this easement and what are the short and long-term impacts for the neighbors, the community as a whole?
So, the reason that this applicant is requesting to vacate this easement is they're requesting a building permit. As we started looking into this, we noticed that all, a majority of the homes in this subdivision encroach on this easement, or most of them are built right on top of it. I don't, I don't wanna get down on the planners of the past, they did not have the tools that Dan and I have at our fingertips now. I mean, we have an amazing GIS staff in the engineering department, all of this information is at a click of a mouse for us. Back when this subdivision was developed, it was likely paper maps and digging through recorders, records. So, it was just missed that there was in fact an easement, I believe, looking at it, the orientation of this, these were supposed to be the backyards, not the front yards, but the way the roads were developed, the houses all ended up fronting this direction. So, these utility easements were never used, never utilized, there's no infrastructure within them and they were heavily encroached upon throughout the subdivision. But with the tools we have now, we know that the easement is there and we can't grant a building permit over the top of an easement, whether it's used or not. The long-term impacts for the property is the vacation, the easement would mean that if a utility wanted to run into the property, they would have to grant that utility an easement going forward to support their infrastructure on their private property. Since the easement vacation is exclusive to the single subject property, I don't believe that there would be any long-term effects for the adjacent properties.
Cool, so basically this property is the, the hot potato, the last one that got stuck when everyone else kind of already built over it and yeah.
Chairman Offredal, Vice Chair Baumann, they're more the first, the to redevelop within this subdivision. When the other property owners within this subdivision that are encroaching on this, if they ever want to redevelop, they're gonna run into the same problem.
Okay.
So.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Dietrichson, again, just basic knowledge that I don't possess. Isn't an easement granted because the utility company wants to run its utility on someone else's land or is this something that's just platted regularly with development?
Chairman Offredal, Commissioner Kibler, both, both are true. Sometimes a utility company will come in and request an easement because if they're gonna put their infrastructure in, into your private property, they want to be granted access to maintain it. This one was done with the original plat of the subdivision, it was likely where the developer planned to put infrastructure for this property, however, that infrastructure was never developed within the easement and so it just went unused.
Again, to sort of follow up, I can imagine the utilities that would run to a house, why, how were they not used? How, how did the utilities not convey to the property? Did they convey some other way?
Chairman Offredal, Commissioner Kibler, currently there is only rural water in this area and they would have their own easement documents and the power company is running from a line that comes from the road right of way.
Yeah, thank you.
Any additional questions for city staff? Okay, seeing none, I'll open the public hearing. Is the applicant available to answer any questions or is there anybody in attendance that wishes to speak on behalf of this agenda item? Is there anybody who wishes to speak in opposition to this agenda item? Anybody wish to speak for or against this agenda item? Okay, seeing, seeing none, no one come forward, we'll close the public hearing, turn it over to commissioners for a motion.
I'll go ahead and move to approve based on staff recommendations and finding of fact.
Yeah, I would second.
We got a motion to approve by Vice Chair Baumann with the second from Commissioner Kibler, any discussion? Okay, seeing none, we'll call the roll.
Baumann.
Yes.
Iverson.
Yes.
Kibler.
Yes.
Menham.
Yes.
Offredal.
Yes.
Pontanila.
Yes.
Trudeau.
Yes.
Amick.
Yes.
Doctor.
Yes.
Ziegler.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, moving on to agenda item five point two, flicker tail addition, lot eighteen interim use permit, public hearing request by Jacob Filing, representing SNL Properties, owner for an interim use permit on the property zone C-two, general commercial district for the placement of a temporary modular building. Legal description for the property is lot eighteen flicker tail addition, city of Minot, property address is forty-six hundred North Broadway. That will turn it over to staff for finding and report.
Chairman Offredal, members of the commission. Here we see the subject property, bound in black with the six hundred foot notification area, again, denoted in pink. They are requesting an IUP for a modular building. This modular building is going to be used for a classroom space, it was purchased from Jim Hill Middle School and will be moved out to this location and continue to use as classroom space. This is a religious institution and they are looking to increase their space for Sunday services and Sunday school and things like that. This is for an interim use, their goal is a capital campaign to expand their building. But right now, they're just looking for some space and it was for sale from the school district. Here you can see the site plan, so you can see they've noted where they're gonna put their sidewalk and they've shown where they're gonna put the modular building. The door, doors are noted in green, there is a wall, this is two separate classrooms within a single modular building, but it would be located directly adjacent to where the church building is now. Zoning for the property is C-two general commercial and it just has some industrial land adjacent. Future land use for this area is gateway commercial with some additional light industrial to the south. Site photos on the east, you can kind of see, you're facing east towards north, Main Street North. On the right-hand side, you're facing north towards the inner base travel plaza. On the left here, you are looking northwest towards the proposed location of the modular building and on the right, you are facing north towards the, the North Broadway. Here's staff's finding of fact, they can be found in staff's written report. Planning commission has the authority to hear this case and decide whether it should be approved or denied with or without conditions. Staff recommends that the planning commission adopt staff finding of fact and approve the interim use permit for the portable classroom with the following recommended condition. The termination date shall be September third, twenty thirty-five, or upon the issuance of a certificate of occupancy for a permanent building expansion encompassing classroom capacity, whichever is sooner. And with that, I would stand for questions.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Okay, seeing none, I'll open the public hearing. Is there anybody that wishes to, in attendance that wishes to speak on behalf of this agenda item? Anybody that wishes to speak in opposition of this agenda item? Anybody who wished to speak for or against? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and turn it over to commissioners for a motion.
Move to approve based on staff finding of fact. And I'll second.
I will second.
Okay, so I got Commissioner Kibler on a motion to approve and I did get a second from Commissioner Amick, is that right? Okay, any discussion? No discussion, okay, seeing none, we'll call the roll.
Baumann.
Yes.
Iverson.
Yes.
Kibler.
Yes.
Menham.
Yes.
Offredal.
Yes.
Pontanila.
Yes.
Trudeau.
Yes.
Amick.
Yes.
Doctor.
Yes.
Ziegler.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, moving on to agenda item five point three, public hearing request by Wayne Strand, owner for preliminary plat on property zoned R-one, single family residential district and, and AG agricultural district. Legal description of the property is lots one and two, block one of Lee Heina's fourth edition of the city of Minot. Property address is thirty-nine hundred Sixteenth Street Northwest. That will turn it over to staff for findings and report.
Chairman Offredal, commissioners. Again, we find our subject property bound in black with a six hundred foot notification area denoted in pink. This property is located just outside of city limits in northwest Minot and they are proposing a preliminary plat for the adjustment of lot lines. This went into the major plat process because the property is unplatted previously. Here you can see the preliminary plat, the dashed lines show you where the original, you know, home lot was and where the agricultural lot adjacent used to be. They are adjusting the east property line to the west and the south property line further south. They are meeting the required acreage for the zoning districts for R-one and ag. As you can see here, lot one is zoned R-one and lot two is zoned agricultural. They also have many other districts in the area, including M-one industrial, P-public, R-one, single family one, R-one S, R-three, RM and R-four, all in this area. This is right up in the Ramstead School area. This would be just northwest of the Ramstead Middle School. The future land use designation is suburban residential with urban residential, commercial, general commercial, gateway, commercial, mixed use center, light, industrial and public and institutional adjacent. Facing east, you can see the agricultural portion. On the right-hand side, you can see the private driveway to the property facing south. On the left-hand side, you are facing north down Sixteenth Street Northwest and the photo on the right is facing west. That'd be the bypass out there on the west. Here is staff finding of fact, you can find them in staff's written report. Planning commission has the authority to hear this case and provide a recommendation to city council on whether the preliminary plat should be approved with or without conditions or denied. And with that, no, nope, I got my recommendation yet, sorry. Staff recommends planning commission adopt staff finding of fact and approve the major subdivision preliminary plat for Lena's sixth addition and with that, I will stand for questions.
Thank you. And Vice Chair Baumann?
Mr. Dietrichson, on the zoning map slide, you had some light blue hatching that was kind of over a portion of that, I was just unfamiliar with that and I was wondering if you could explain what that means or represents.
Oh, that is the airport noise buffer, so when you apply for a building permit within that overlay zone, you are required to provide extra noise insulation with any, within any building constructed.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Dietrichson, again, just when people fill out these requests for plat changes, what's the reason for this change? It seems like a very simple one, but are they typically provide a rationale for a change other than cleanup?
Chairman Offredal, Commissioner Kibler, sometimes they tell us why they're modifying their lot lines and sometimes they do not. In this case, it's my understanding that the owner is interested in selling the home lot.
Thank you.
Any additional questions? Okay, seeing none, I'll open the public hearing, anybody in attendance wishes to speak on behalf of this agenda item? Anybody wish to speak in opposition of this agenda item? Anybody wish to speak for or against this agenda item? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and we will send it over to commissioners for a motion.
I'll go ahead and move to approve based on staff recommendations and findings of fact.
I'll second.
Okay, so I got a motion to approve by Vice Chair Baumann and I think Commissioner Menham, did you get in there?
Yes.
Second with Commissioner Menham.
Finally.
Any discussion? Any discussion, okay, seeing none, we'll call the roll.
Baumann.
Yes.
Iverson.
Yes.
Kibler.
Yes.
Menham.
Yes.
Offredal.
Yes.
Pontanila.
Yes.
Trudeau.
Yes.
Amick.
Yes.
Doctor.
Yes.
Ziegler.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, moving on to agenda item number five point four, able acres addition, public hearing request by Rob Bernard Ackerman serving, surveying, representing Dakota's and Boys Ranch Foundation, owner for preliminary plat on property zoned AG. Legal description for the property is out lot eight of southwest quarter, northwest quarter, northwest quarter and southwest quarter, section eight, township one fifty-five north, range eighty-three west, Ward County, North Dakota. That will turn it over to staff for findings and report.
Chairman Offredal, commissioners, again, we find our subject property outlined in black and the six hundred foot notification buffer outlined in pink. I will point out as well, you see that blue line that on the west side of this, that is the ETJ line that separates Minot's extraterritorial zoning jurisdiction from the city of Burlington's extraterritorial zoning jurisdiction. So, we're right on the zoning jurisdiction line here. Here we can see the preliminary plat, they are proposing two lots. Both meet ag, ag district minimum lot size requirements. The current zoning of the property is rural residential and ag district. There is also some R-one, single family home district adjacent. The subject property is zoned rural residential in the comprehensive plans, future land use map and there, that's it, that's all we've got out in that area, so there's no other adjacent. Here you can see an aerial photo from the property. At this point, I just wanted to point out, we did have current aerial photography done of the entire city this last summer, so if it is all right with the commission, you can let us know, if it's not, I'm gonna stop sending Dan out to take pictures of empty agricultural fields for you, just to save staff time. We, we've already spent the money to aerial, aerial photography of the whole city. Gas and time do not need to be spent taking picture of empty ag fields anymore, we have current photography to provide you in this format unless there's an objection. Here is staff finding of fact, it can be found in the staff's written report. Again, planning commission has the authority to hear this case and provide recommendation to the city council on whether the preliminary plat should be approved with or without conditions or denied. Staff is recommending that the planning commission adopt staff finding of fact and recommend city council approve the major subdivision preliminary plat for able acres addition. And with that, I will stand for questions.
Thank you. Any questions for city staff? Okay, seeing none, I'll open the public hearing, anybody in attendance that wishes to speak on behalf of this agenda item? Anybody who wished to speak in opposition of this agenda item? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, turn it over to commissioners for a motion.
I, I move to approve staff's findings of facts.
I will second that.
Okay, we got a motion to approve by Commissioner Menham and a second by Commissioner Iverson, any discussion? Any discussion, okay, seeing none, call the roll.
Baumann.
Yes.
Iverson.
Yes.
Kibler.
Yes.
Menham.
Yes.
Offredal.
Yes.
Pontanila.
Yes.
Trudeau.
Yes.
Amick.
Yes.
Doctor.
Yes.
Ziegler.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, moving on to agenda item number five point five, public hearing request by Caleb Heilman, owner of, owner for a conditional use permit on a property zoned R-three B multiple resident district for a preschool and commercial daycare facility. The legal description for this property is lot one north Minot seventh edition of the city of Minot, property address is eight twelve, eighth street Northwest. That will turn it over to staff for findings and report.
Chairman Offredal, members of the commission. Again, we find our subject property outlined in black and a three hundred foot notification buffer denoted in pink. This is directly south of the MSU campus. Here is the site plan as provided by the applicant that shows the location of the buildings and the pavement and the circulation within the property and also included is the landscaping plan as required through our LDO to show landscaping, both buffering to adjacent properties and, uh, street landscaping. The current property is zoned R-three B multiple resident district, this is a remnant zoning district and in our zoning equivalency table in the LDO, this property's zoning district is treated as RM medium density residential. We also have public, R-two B, R-three, additional R-three Bs and R-three C districts adjacent. The future land use designation is suburban residential, the district, the adjacent districts are urban residential, public institutional and parks and recreation. On the left, we see a photo, we are facing east down University Avenue West and the photo on the right, we are facing south towards the subject property. On the left, we are facing north towards the MSU campus and on the right, we are facing west down University Avenue West. Here is staff finding of fact, these can be found in staff's written report. The planning commission has the authority to hear this case and decide whether it should be approved or denied with or without conditions. Staff is recommending that the planning commission adopt the staff finding of fact and approve the conditional use permit for a preschool and daycare early learning facility with the following recommended conditions. The maximum number of students occupants shall not exceed the allowed macusum occupancy as determined by the state licensing authority. Permits are required for construction. Any change to the structure, egress of occupants, proposed room dimensions, ceiling heights, et cetera, would have to be reviewed by the building division with a floor plan and submitted construction documents and will require appropriate building or remodel permits. Fire protection must be constructed and maintained as required by fire code as determined by the fire chief or their designee. Carbon monoxide detection required within the building. ADA compliance may be required, further review of the interior floor plan and scope of construction is required before this site can be analyzed. Licensing, the conditional use permit shall serve as the license from the city of Minot to operate this facility under the terms of the permit. Upon issuance of the permit, the applicant shall be deemed the permutee or permit holder and agrees to the terms of the permit and follow, and to follow all ordinances and regulations of the city of Minot and all county, state and federal laws and regulations. The conditional use permit can be revoked at any time by the planning commission following a show of cause hearing that is met, that has met the public hearing notification requirements. And with that, I will stand for questions.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Dietrichson.
Uh, yeah, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Diedrickson, uh, one, I'm certainly for this project. I think the Montessori school, uh, goes a long way towards advancing education and innovation in Minot. And it's the kind of thing that a grown up city has. Uh, but at the same time, I'm wondering, fire protection, carbon monoxide detection? We've not really delved into that level of detail of building in the past, is there some reason why we're doing so now?
Uh, Chairman Offredal, Commissioner Kibler, these are recommendations that come in with this permit from building officials and fire officials, and it's because the occupancy is primarily children that may or may not be able to egress the building on their own. So early warning and quick egress would be key in this situation to prevent any hazards.
Okay, so because it's children, it, it enters our domain and not just building inspection, building creation? Uh, who would handle this, I think?
Chairman Offredal, Commissioner Kibler, this permit is, is just a, a good way to reinforce that those regulations are in place and that the owner occupant is required to meet all of these standards in order to operate a preschool and a daycare. We, as the city and the planning commission, you are, you are granting the permit to conduct that activity within this building. And so violation of those give you grounds to tell them to stop immediately.
Yeah, thank you. Any additional comments, questions for city staff?
Isn't the building done?
Chairman Offredal, Commissioner Amick, uh, the building is approaching completion. Um, the conditional use permit was not required to construct the building. It's required in order to use it for a preschool and daycare.
That's what I was wondering. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I missed that, what was that?
Thank you.
Oh, okay.
Any further discussion? Questions? No? Okay, with that, I'll open the public hearing. Is there anybody in attendance that wishes to speak on behalf of this agenda item? Anybody wish to speak in opposition of this agenda item? Anybody for or against? Okay, seeing nobody come up, we'll turn it over to commissioners for a motion.
I'll move to approve based on staff recommendations and conditions and findings of fact.
Second?
Okay, we got a motion to approve by Vice Chair Bowman and a second by Commissioner Kibler. Any discussion?
Just like to put it out there, uh, gratitude to the applicant for, uh, working to help make childcare a little bit more accessible and provide some opportunities across the community. We know that this is a conversation that's been going on for a really long time. So, uh, appreciate that there's some solutions coming forward and, uh, not just more of the same, but even, um, some diversity in those offerings. So kudos to you, thank you, um, it's exciting to see.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, we'll call the roll.
Bowman?
Yes.
Iverson?
Yes.
Kibler?
Yes.
Menham?
Yes.
Offredal?
Yes.
Ponte Neela?
Yes.
Trudeau?
Yes.
Amick?
Yes.
Doctor?
Yes.
Ziegler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, moving on to agenda item five point six, public hearing request by Jonathan Lane Endeavor Holdings, Holdings, owner for a conditional use permit for a group home facility on the property zoned R one single family residential. Legal description of the property is south fifty of lot one, block fifteen and twenty, including vacated street of Ramstead's Riverdale subdivision to the city of Minot. Property address is six twenty-four Main Street South. That will turn it over to staff for findings and report.
Chairman Offredal, members of the commission. Again, we find our subject property bound in black and a three hundred foot notification buffer and denoted in pink. They are requesting a conditional use permit for a group home, seven to twelve residents. Here you can find the floor plan as submitted by the applicant and is required for the conditional use permit. The current zoning of the property is R one, single family residential. Adjacent, you can find C two, central business district, R two, and R three B districts. The current future land use designation is suburban residential. There is also general, commercial, and neighborhood commercial adjacent. On the left-hand side, you will find a photo facing east down Seventh Avenue Southwest. The photo on the right is facing south down Main Street South. The photo on the left here is facing north towards the subject property. And the photo on the right is facing west down Seventh Avenue Southwest. Here is staff finding of fact, it can be found in staff written, staff's written report. Planning commission has the authority to hear this case and decide whether it should be approved or denied with or without conditions. Staff is recommending approval based on finding of fact with the following recommended conditions. The maximum number of occupants shall not exceed ten persons, not including staff members. Permits are required for construction. Any changes to the structure, egress of occupants, proposed room dimensions, ceiling heights would have to be reviewed by the building division and a floor plan submitted with construction documents and require appropriate building and remodeling permits. Smoke detectors are required, interconnected smoke detectors are required within each sleeping room, outside each sleeping room, and each story of the building. Carbon monoxide detection is required within the building. Egress windows with a minimum of forty-eight inch escape clearance from the floor are required for all sleeping rooms in the basement. ADA compliance may be required, further, uh, review of the scope of the project is required in order to make that determination. Again, licensing, the conditional use permit will serve as the license from the city of Minot to operate this facility under the terms of the permit. Upon issuance of the permit, the applicant is deemed to be the permutee or the permit holder and agrees to the terms of the permit and to follow all ordinance and regulations of the city of Minot and all county, state, and federal laws and regulations. The permit shall be non-transferable and shall expire if the group home ceases operation. A change in occupancy shall cause, shall be caused for amendment or a new conditional use permit. The conditional use permit can be revoked at any time by the planning commission following a show of cause hearing that has met the public hearing notification requirements. Residents of the property must abide by the following restrictions. No sex offenders, no persons with violent criminal histories. No persons requiring personal care such as daily personal assistance or function, to function normally. No residents under the age of eighteen, no weapons are permitted on the property, and no un-prescribed or illegal drugs or alcohol are permitted on the property. The residents of the property must maintain the yard with no unnecessary litter. On-street parking is limited to two spaces directly adjacent to the residence. And with that, I will stand for questions.
Thank you. Any questions for city staff?
Uh, just to clarify, we've had a few cases, um, similar to this that have come before us in the last year or so. Um, and one of the reasons that they brought the case forward had little to do with the use of the property as much as the capacity of people living within that property or on that property. Is this a similar case where, um, Endeavor Holdings would be able to have a group home regardless of what anyone says? Um, but the reason they're here today as an applicant is because they would like to have ten people living there and that's outside of the scope of normal? Or is this something that goes deeper down to the idea that, um, a group home would not be allowed in an R one, single-family, uh, zoning?
Chairman Offredal, Vice Chair Bowman, uh, they are permitted by right to operate a group home within the R one, single-family home district up to six residents. The reason the applicant needs to be granted a conditional use permit is for that additional four residents to this property.
Okay.
At this point, I'd also like to point out that we are bringing you a text message, or text amendment later in this meeting where we are going to address group homes and their maximum occupancy because that is usually the primary reason in which people break these.
Okay.
Conditional use permits to the planning commission.
So, speaking my, speaking to make sure that I'm understanding and also for my colleagues and folks who might be in the audience as well, what we're looking at today is, is it a group home of six people or a group home of ten people? And not, is it a group home or not a group home, correct?
Chairman Offredal, Commissioner Bowman, that is correct.
Thank you.
They are permitted by right for up to six residents plus staff.
Thanks.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Diedrickson, I, I wonder if you couldn't, for our general knowledge and, and everyone else's too, sort of draw out for us the distinction between a conditional use permit and a special use permit? And why a conditional use permit would be preferable in this circumstance?
Chairman Offredal, Commissioner Kibler, we don't use special use permits anymore. We, we have interim use permits and conditional use permits, and interim use permits require an expiration date.
Okay.
Conditional use permits become a vested land right that follows with the property unless a condition is placed that it's non-transferable. As you will notice in this conditional use permit, staff is recommending a non-transferable conditional use permit when operating a facility like this. It, um, it's been the wishes of this commission and, and its best practices for staff to have each individual operator come into this commission for their facility. So, this is being issued to endeavor sober living and it is non-transferable. They cannot transfer it to another operator without coming back to this commission.
Okay, thank you. And just to be clear then, no more special use? It's interim conditional, is that the terminology?
Uh, Chairman Offredal, Commissioner Kibler, that's correct. We have interim use permits which are, like I said, have an expiration date. Um, just best practices in planning, we've gone to use that's semantic, but conditional uses. You're allowed to do this under conditions. Special use permits imply that we're treating one property special.
Okay, thank you. Any, uh, additional questions? Discussion, city staff? Okay, seeing none, I'll open the public hearing. Is there anybody in attendance that wishes to speak on behalf of this agenda item? Yes. Sure. You come up, don't, excuse me, come up to the podium, then we'll need to write down your, uh, put down, is there a sheet up there? Yeah, for your name and... Yeah, absolutely, this is what public hearings all about, you can ask as many questions as you like.
I'm a first timer, sorry.
That's okay.
Um...
You may have to pull the microphone up so they can hear you in the back, sorry.
Okay, so my question would be, um, who is responsible for monitoring these conditions? Cause being someone in the neighborhood, I can already say that I've had trucks parked outside my house for days. I have had random people roaming around my neighborhood for this, which I understand is construction, I hear that. But I have already seen some of these things come up and would like to know who's gonna be monitoring that moving forward and when that will start taking place.
Chairman, would you like me to answer?
Sure.
We have code enforcement officers that work under my direction in the planning division. We have a full-time and a part-time code enforcement officer. I will say that our code enforcement is entirely complaint-based. So, if there were an issue where you would see one of these conditions were being violated, I would recommend that you reach out to our code enforcement officer or through the MyMyNot mobile app and lodge a complaint. And she will follow up as soon as her caseload allows. We do only have one, um, however, she is very prompt and she is very thorough when she goes out to do these types of coding, uh, uh, investigations into these complaints that we receive.
So it's up to the neighborhood to make sure that these are, cause we have to complain, we have to file it. It's not just monitored automatically?
Primarily, it is complaint-based. However, the, uh, the code enforcement officers are out in the community. It's not like they'll drive by a violation and not open an investigation. It's just, it, it, it would be solved most quickly by a, a complaint being lodged because I, I can't promise that the code enforcement officer is, is driving by. Or not, you know, it depends on whether she's in the area conducting other business. But, um, it's not like she would just drive by a violation and, oh, no one's complained. She would never take that attitude towards it.
Right.
But i- it would be addressed more quickly if it were reported by a resident.
Okay, can I ask another question that is outside of that? Is there any? Most of my neighborhood is here, hello neighborhood. Um, and we are, are worried, right, it's our neighborhood. I have a kid, my neighbors have ki- we all have kids, we're opening our neighborhood to people who have, unfortunately, a bad history. I don't say that to be mean, it's just fair. Um, for me and most of my neighborhood, I'm sure I'm speaking for, like, we're kind of taken aback by the fact that this house could just be purchased and used for this without a single notice to us until they're trying to grow it and put more people in a house, which shouldn't really happen anyways. They're gonna be smushed in there, but that's fine. Um, there was no notice until it was already happening. And so, for me, I am a first time home buyer, b- first time home buyer, there we go. I came in with my husband, I have a son, I thought this was gonna be a great neighborhood, it's gonna be our first house, it's gonna be so exciting, all to find out that I am now going to be living next door to a group home, which is not something I anticipated my family having to deal with or be exposed to. So, in my head, I find it kind of baffling that there is no notice, no way for us to speak up, no way for us to raise concerns about this until it's already happening and we have no choice at that point. So, in, is there a way around that? Is there some sort of process that lets a neighborhood know, hey, this may be happening? If you have concerns, please raise it to allow us to at least have a voice in the matter? I don't know who wants to answer that one, but...
Do you want me to go? I, I, I guess I, I, I would just say up to six residents is a permitted by right use. There's a, a, a long list of uses that a, a residential property can be used for other than just single family. Some of them are permitted by right, some of them are conditional. Um, a group home up to six people has been a permitted by right use for R one, single-family district since the new zoning ordinance was passed in twenty twenty-one. That was the decision made by the zoning ordinance steering committee, this commission and the city council when the zoning ordinance was passed.
Vice Chair Bowman?
Yep. Um, I appreciate that, Mr. Diedrickson, and I appreciate the concern as well. Um, I think to, to give some context, I've been on the, the zoning or the planning commission since twenty twenty, and we've had several cases that have come forward, um, like this. And so I'm sharing this mostly as just kind of some of the rationale and the things we've learned over the years. Um, just for public learning and discourse. Um, I think one of the biggest things is remembering that, um, one of the things we can't do in determining uses for properties that are, uh, or, or properties that are just kind of generally assigned or zoned is getting into, um, a pattern of those people, if that makes sense. And again, I can understand, um, the concern and the worries about that. Um, I think from a legal perspective, what we've kind of learned over the years is that, um, applying the those people argument is a very slippery slope, uh, based on community norms. And, um, it can very quickly, and we've watched it turn into like, used against people who might rent or try to be used against people who have an addiction and are trying to recover or people of different religious backgrounds. And so, from our perspective, we're really looking to uniformly allow use within a property. And we kind of have to give these like really broad rules that means we're not picking and choosing winners in certain scenarios, but we're providing guidelines and any person coming into that community is able to, uh, meet those guidelines or not meet those guidelines, and it's not a moving target, if that makes sense. Um, you know, I, I think another thing to consider, and, and your neighbors may also have some things to, to share um, about this is, in this particular neighborhood, um, within this notification district, even this is not the first sober living... even, this is not the first sober living home that has been permitted and allowed to be there. Again, the folks that live there may have other applications or real-life thoughts on what that means for day-to-day life, I can't speak what it is.
I can guarantee you, we do, because we already have problems in the neighborhood. Me, myself, I, again, am fairly newer to my home, I actually just hit a year. I have already had people come up to my door at 5:00 in the morning trying to break into my house, and then repeatedly coming multiple times after that, to the point where I called the police every single time, there's record of it. They came to my house four times, as well as my neighbor's house, who is also here, and tried to break into our home. We have people walking up and down our street numerous times, all hours of the day, just walking down, back and down, looking at the houses. We have houses that have been waiting to get torn down because they had issues with drug use, to the point where there were fires involved. And so our neighborhood is suffering from, I'm not trying to say those people, as you said, that's not where I'm trying to go, but we're already suffering from the consequences of opening up this neighborhood to that. And I think my thought in what you're saying is, this isn't necessarily a, I mean, it sounds like a those people, but we're taking a residential building and making it a commercial building. This isn't, this isn't a family coming into a suburban neighborhood, this is a business trying to buy this house and make it into a business, and it's just a completely different ballgame from a those people situation. I don't think it's a matter of, I personally don't see it comparable to, we're trying to rent this home from, we're turning it into a business and bringing in this community of people, like, and I'm, welcome anyone else to come speak, but with us already having this many issues in this neighborhood of this kind, having another home put in to our neighborhood when we already have more than one, just seems crazy to me. It doesn't seem like a good option for even the people that are going to be going into that house, because they're now exposed to the people that are walking around our neighborhood, to the people that are down the street trying to also, like, it's just opening up a lot of doors, and again, I do think that it's only fair, I don't even care what kind of business it is, that in a neighborhood, if you're going to sell a home and make it a business, it's going to impact the entire neighborhood. There should at least be some type of notice to stop that, or at least say, hey, we're just letting you know this is what's going to happen, if there are any concerns, please bring it to our attention before the sale is final, because now we're kind of just stuck with it, and it's not really anything that I anticipated when I purchased my home a year ago. I thought I was getting a great family home, now I'm scared to even let my kid outside. And it's because there's just constant issues with this group of people, unfortunately, and I just think that should be something that's considered moving forward. That wasn't really a question.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Oh, yeah, question.
Excuse me, I have one question. The issues that you've had thus far, have they all stemmed from this house, if they've already had six people staying there?
This house has no people in it, they're still building it, from my understanding, they're still doing various construction projects, from my understanding, nobody lives in this house yet. Before they bought the house, it was a family, so we didn't have issues with this house.
Okay.
It's the multiple group homes around us already that are there.
And so the issues are stemming from the multiple group homes in the neighborhood?
From that, from people that live in the neighborhood, like, we're just kind of in a tough situation, because we have all the group homes, we're in between, what is it? You'll know.
Milton Thomas and Henry Towers.
There we go. She's my go-to with the neighborhood information. So we just have this group of people kind of just surrounding us now, and it's just continuing to grow, because now we're putting in another group home and we're adding more to the community that's been put around us, unfortunately.
Thank you.
Your turn.
Chairman Offidall, Planning Commission and City Planners, I have to agree with Brianna. This is a really tough area, and I don't feel it's a good area to put people that are struggling, because there is so much activity. I spent the summer last, last summer, working with the Drug Task Force, and had it not been for a neighbor, and this house is across the street from the proposed rehab, and had it not been for a neighbor who is pretty much homebound, and his kitchen window over his sink and over his kitchen table overlooked my house, where I had accidentally rented to two felons from California, who were taking U-Haul rental vans about every two or three weeks back and forth to California and bringing meth, heroin, fentanyl. And they, they were finally arrested, the Drug Task Force did a raid on June 8th, and they had guns, they had all kinds of drugs, and had it not been for the neighbor who took pictures through his window and got license plates and people and everything, they wouldn't have been found, because our police force is struggling, so they don't, there's not enough. The same thing with Brianna's house, when the four people were there, or the four times, it was the same three people that showed up, starting at 5:00 in the morning on this day. Had it not been for her Ring camera and a neighbor's uncle who used to work for the police force who recognized the individual, they wouldn't have been found out who it was, because the police never got there when, the four times when she called, they weren't able to get there in time to arrest the people. And do you know of any other houses that within one block, three homes have been burned due to meth? One has been destroyed completely, two are on the list, hopefully soon to be destroyed. This is a very bad area with drugs, and when I talked to the Drug Task Force, they told me it's because of the two towers that are now housing a lot of drug addicts. And I don't know if it's because of our methadone clinic, if we're drawing people to our town, or what it is. But it seems like Minot has much more of a problem than other cities, at least this area does. Last summer, when I was at this house, cleaning it out after the people went to jail, there were so many people walking up and down the alley, and there's kind of a secret stairway that goes down to M&amp;H gas station, and that's kind of like a steady highway all day long, of people just roaming around with backpacks, and they don't work, and I would visit with them, and most of them weren't from North Dakota. Anyway, I just don't feel it's a safe area to put people that are struggling with drugs or alcohol in, in this area. And from another neighbor, I was told that The Seeds of Hope often has the police there, and that that's another rehab for men, which is not run by Endeavor Properties, but, but it's right there, it's close. Looking at the property that is proposed to be a rehab, the backyard has been totally made into a parking lot, it's like crushed pavement, and then the front yard is very, very small. Also, I feel like, you know, who, who monitors the programming to be sure that these people are getting helped? It's so important, because drugs are such a strong draw, that unless they have a lot of commitment, a lot of support, whether it's family or medical or whatever, they're not going to be successful. And so who monitors that?
You know, I think the applicant's in here, so we may, we may allow him to come up and speak on that behalf, because we don't know the answer. The other, the other point that I'd also like to make, that Vice Chair Baumann brought up, you know, as a Planning Commission, we don't have the authority to say that he can or cannot have that business there. We can, it's a conditional use permit that is allowing him to go up to that 10 persons. So, you know, even if we were to deny this conditional use permit tonight, tomorrow he can go and have six residents, and that's, that's above our authority as a Planning Commission. We can't say yea or nay, that there's a whole process to go through, City Council, through his zoning ordinance and everything like that. So that's where we get into a little tricky situation on, you know, what we can pick and choose, if who can have a business and what business they could have, you know, are you selling woodwork in your garage, are you doing this? We don't have that authority up here. You know, I totally understand where you guys are coming from, we've had this conversation a few times, you know, and we had it in our neighborhood probably six, seven years ago, I was in the same shoes, I totally get it, so. But as far as what we're allowed to do on the authority, it's a conditional use permit, as Vice Chair Baumann had mentioned at the beginning of this, and we can also have the legal come up here and explain some of that as well, but as far as the ordinance on six people, we don't have the authority to back away from that.
It just seems like, you know, it should have a big yard, it should have
Right.
more than, than is going to be available there, especially when people are trying to recover from something.
But as far as the process and monitoring and all that, we'll allow Mr. Lane to come up and, and discuss that, he's always been willing to come to the microphone when we've had these in the past, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Before we go further, I want to apologize, I actually have an excused commitment that I need to run to, so I'm not running away, I apologize for that, but I do need to get to another obligation at this point, so thanks.
And he did.
Sorry, my name's Donovan Ziegler, I bought my house three years ago. I understand we can't stop this, like, which is a whole different story, but I guess why, he hasn't even opened yet, and he already wants to shove more people in a house. You know, there's, six people's quite a few already in one house. 10 is a heck of a lot more, doesn't seem that big of a number, but to me, that's quite a few people to be living in one small house. Our neighborhood's over 100 years old at this point, I have the newest house, I believe, in the neighborhood, which is from the 50s, but I don't see why we need to put 10 people in there right away. I think six is, we can't stop it, whatever's fine, but I don't see why, what's the point of immediately jumping it up to 10? It's a business, I get it, you want to make money, but seems a little excessive to me personally to shove 10 people into essentially a bandied business. I mean, hasn't proven anything that they're going to keep it under control or anything, see no point to allow that many people right away. If he can prove that he can keep it clean and whatnot with six, down the road, maybe, put it up to 10, whatever, can't stop it, but 10 people right away, too many people for one house, that's my opinion. I mean, wanted to say that.
Appreciate it, and then we'll allow the applicant to come up, and he may have a reason for you, but...
Chairman Offidall, Commissioners, my name is Jonathan Lane, I am the founder and owner of Endeavor Sober Living and Providence House. Our thought process behind this house being where it's positioned is that it is two blocks away from the Providence House, which is the treatment center for pregnant parenting women, who is our target demographic, who are finding an exponential need for the services here in Minot. I want to remind everybody again that we're not bringing the problem here, we're bringing the solution. We're a very, very structured, very rigid, very organized program. We, as far as Endeavor goes, we have two house managers who are there at all times, who are paid employees, who are also in recovery, and so we don't take this recovery lightly. We're not just some little halfway house and kind of you just stay there sort of a deal. There's been quite a few concerns that, that kind of shows the stigma of addiction still around, and that's heartbreaking. I don't think anybody ever grows up and has to be an alcoholic, has to be an addict. If this doesn't affect your family, then you are seriously lucky in this whole entire world, because I don't know too many people who it doesn't. The greatest gift I've ever been given my whole entire life is sobriety, the greatest, the second greatest gift I've ever been, is to be able to work with these people. They're amazing. I've had 11 businesses in my lifetime. The greatest people I've ever had work for me are people who are in recovery, not people who are abstinent, people who are in recovery. They show up early, yes sir, no sure, they stay late, they don't worry about things except trying to stay clean and sober. That's what our program looks like, our program is an honor and a privilege to be here. Our program isn't something where you get sentenced here and you have to be here, and we're checking boxes to get these things done. Our program is a place where women who are begging to get here, we have 24, 24 women on the waiting list today? And it's not because of a methadone clinic in Minot, it's because addiction's rampant across the United States. I'm personally going to school right now for addiction counseling. The stats went up 1.4% across the United States since 2020, of people suffering from addiction. There's 8.3 billion people on this planet, 11.47% of us are alcoholics and addicts. It's not about these people, it's about what can I do to help God's kids? Where's my part in this? My part is to be there for the next person who reaches out for help, not to shut my door, not to lock my kids up, they have kids. We're trying to reunify these women with their children, we're trying to give them a safe place to recover. They have a curfew of 10 o'clock, they go to work, they pay taxes, they have jobs. We already have an apartment complex across town, we've been open for well over a year. Providence House is coming up on two years, December 5th. We're not just coming here today, we've been here. We have a men's center down in Arnegar, North Dakota, that's coming up on five years next July. We have men who are, who call me crying because they got their driver's license. We have these women who, who have, we have CPS at our place almost weekly, if not two, three times a week. There's nowhere for us to go, it's not like we're bringing these people to your neighborhood. We're bringing a solution, we're bringing an outcome. Just because you say no, doesn't mean that addiction's going to go anywhere. If you say you can only have six people, doesn't mean they're just going to stop addiction. We're here to help, we want to be part of the solution, and I haven't had one neighbor come up to me at our six houses that we have now, and say, I really wish you guys weren't there. What they always say is, you guys are amazing, what you guys do over there is great, here's some eggs, here's some milk, you guys need clothes, see what's going on over there, is there anything we can do to help? We have a tractor, can we mow the yard for you? It's repeated, things like that, over and over and over. We're here to help, and we want to be a part of the solution, and I don't feel any different about this place. I think it's going to be amazing, I think it's going to be wonderful, and I appreciate you guys taking the time to hear me out.
Just one little follow-up question here, I believe it was asked earlier on, like, who monitors it and what the process is, and maybe you could go through that, because that question was asked and it was on my notes here, so.
So, there's two women who, who work there, who, somebody's there all the time, obviously they have days off, they'll compensate for each other's time off. They're paid staff, they live there, they stay there, they work there, they're in charge of monitoring the girls, they have to make sure that their UAs are taken, that their breathalyzer's are taken, that they're going to their meetings, that they're going to their groups, that they're showing up, that they're paying rent, that we have service commitments around the community that they're responsible for, you have a minimum of two service commitments. We volunteer at the old folks home, we get to go to some of the daycares, we do the food pantry, we get to go play bingo, I mean, there's all kinds of stuff that we're doing around here. So they're in charge of making sure that the day-to-day operations are fulfilled. This isn't just a halfway house where you check in, check out. We have a whole data system that's tracked, you have a kiosk that's in there, when you come in, you sign in, when you leave, you sign out. When somebody comes to visit you, you have to have that approved, when you want to go on a pass, you have to have your pass approved. All these things are done by managers who are there, who then report to administration staff, so there's several of them that's above that. This isn't just a little fly-by-night operation, this is a well-oiled machine.
Any questions for Mr. Lane?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if I could, just out of curiosity, I do hear what the community's saying, and I think it's, it's right, I certainly support these sort of endeavors to help people, because it's so instrumental to their recovery, and their recovery is valuable to the community overall. At the same time, I do wonder if there's not a saturation rate for a neighborhood for a certain number of houses that are to rehabilitate people, and so I guess in light of that question, I wonder, or wonder, is there, what's the relapse rate of people who are in your homes? Do you know?
I don't have the exact numbers, but I, we were running a very high successful rate, because our model's a long-term model, we don't just, that's the whole point of what Endeavor Sober Living is, it's not a little magic wand, 32-day treatment, everything's good in your life because you went here or you stayed at Endeavor for 30 days and your life's good, see you later, bye, here's my card, call me if you need me. So our model, our model is a long-term deal, we're going to walk through this with you, and we're going to be there with you, and we're going to support you through this, and if that's not what you want, then we probably need to find you somewhere else to go, because like I said, it's an honor and a privilege to be there, and we're going to act accordingly.
And I know you've been up here before for other houses of the programs that you've, you've started, and I know this question has been asked of you and of Mr. Diederichsen before, that the, the problems that are associated with your houses, there's not real a lot of, there's a lot of imagined problems, and every- And every time one of these houses gets put in a neighborhood, everyone in the neighborhood comes out with concerns, and that's a right and do thing to do. But we've not seen it as a group, have we? Problems associated with these halfway houses, the addiction centers? And I know, Mr. Diedgerson, I asked this before, and the answer was low or none.
Chairman Ofodol, Commissioner Kibler, we have received no complaints for any of the sites operated by Endeavor Sober Living in the city of Minot. We have not received any complaints that, that have even warranted to send the code enforcement officer out to investigate. We've received no complaints.
Yeah, thank you.
Just, just to touch base on that, if we were to see some complaints in the code, I mean, that's why we have the opportunity to revoke the conditional use permit on something like that. If we were to find some violations within this conditional use permit, correct?
Chairman Ofodol, that's correct. If there were a complaint that was received and validated by our code enforcement officer as a violation of either city, state, or county ordinances or regulations, which they are required to follow all of them, and it was found to be a valid complaint, that would lead to a forecause hearing to be brought before this planning commission, where you would be given the opportunity to revoke the conditional use permit. But again, we have received no complaints on this operator's facilities, and there are now several in town.
Okay. Any further questions for Mr. Lane while he's up here? If not, we'll, why don't you hold tight, because we might have some questions for you, if you don't mind, again? Yeah, absolutely. It's still a public hearing. You guys, as long as we do this in an orderly and orderly fashion, you guys can speak as long as you need to.
I would be as civil as, I am civil. And hello again. So my question for you, I think, one, I hear the passion in your voice. I do not want to take that away from you. I think that what you're doing is great work. I don't want you to think that I don't. I am someone who is impacted, and I hear what you're saying, and I understand. I think what you need to consider is that what we're looking for here, we already know we can't stop it, right? Like, you own the house. It's, it's happening, okay? That's, it is what it is. What we need to hear is things like your second answer. Not the, we're fighting against addiction. We know that. We need to hear how this is going to be monitored. How do we know that we're safe? How do we know who we complain to? How do we know how to handle when something does come up? As someone who has been living in this neighborhood for just a year and has already called the police on numerous occasions and seen that they don't show up on time, sorry, I know they're short-staffed, what are we going to do when something like, something happens? Like, what is the answer there? Who do we call? How do we know it's being handled? Like, I think what you need to consider here is that we are a neighborhood that has been impacted by group homes that are in our neighborhood already, that are not being run, as well as I'm hearing that yours are, which, good for you, but like, you need to consider that on our part and can see why we're concerned. It's not us against your cause. It's us protecting our families, me protecting my kid. Like, I am here with my own passion because I don't want him to be exposed to things. And we're already having those issues in the neighborhood, so having another group home come in is a very concerning thing for us. So I think that that's the route you need to go. You need to show us. How are you going to do this? How do we know that this is going to be okay for us? How do I know that living across the street is not going to cause significant problems for me? That's what we need to hear. So you started saying it by the monitoring question, like, tell us more about that. Tell us how we know, not just we've always had this, because we have all these issues, right? Like, I think that that's what we need to look at. Like, we're not coming at you out of nowhere. We're saying, hey, we have all these problems already. How do we know you're not going to add more? That's, that's, it's not really a question, but it's just a request of tell us what you're going to do to make it not feel worse for us. Yes?
Thank you. Do you want to listen to both of them and then answer, or would you like to? It's totally, whatever, however you like to do it.
We don't live all that far. We live on First Street. We've already had people stopping and talking and asking, coming up the steps, is this the seeds of Eden? No, it's not. Go the next, go the next block, whatever. We're already, what we're seeing, okay, you've got rehab houses, and I get that. But we also have a druggie problem, like Jan was saying, there's that stairway, it's a traffic between the two places, between M and H or wherever. Police have been down in M and H. Police have been whipping up First Street. We don't know what's going on. I've got grandkids, and he said, there's some weirdos up there. They're, they're strange people. Up there, I don't know exactly what he saw, but it's concerning as a grandparent. And yes, alcohol and drugs have affected my family too. I get it. They need help. But you've got everything right on, right along Main Street. I was here two years ago talking against having that right there. So, and I, and who do we complain to? Who do we call? You call the police department? They may get there on time. They may not. They, they're busy. They're stretched. Do we call a commissioner? Are they going to come over and help? What, what do we do when there is a problem? You say we haven't gotten any complaints. Who do we call to complain? The mayor? I mean, I don't know.
And I think Principal Planner earlier said that they do have a code enforcement officer that, and I think that would be the starting step.
I don't have his number. I don't know who it is.
Okay.
Where do you get that information?
It's on the City of Minot webpage, but we can probably help them get some of that information or put it out there, right?
It would be appreciated. We know what to do when something happens.
Chairman Ofodol, Code Enforcement has its own webpage. It's not on the planning website. They have their own. If you go onto the City of Minot, you go under Government Departments, and Code Enforcement has its own page.
Thank you. Sure. We got one more there. I appreciate everything that everybody has to say.
I have to sign this thing?
Yes, ma'am.
All right.
I've lived in Minot forty years. The problem's been here before I got here. I didn't bring it. It's all through the town. It is in South Hill by Dakota Square, where they have really nice condos. And I don't know how many times you have a loud and a yelling and, oh, oh, there's a beer can. Eventually, if you make enough calls, and I know the police, they come through with their marked cars, and then they come through with unmarked. I don't know which is which, if they're unmarked or not. The bad guys do. They eventually get a handle on which one's a cop, and they're there at a certain time. But they rotate it around. If you do not call the police, they can't show up and know there's a problem of six people trying to rob your place. Where I live, we have twenty-four apartments just in one building. Within three months or five months, five of the cars were broken into. I said, well, did you call the police? Well, what for? I said, how can they help you if they don't know that there's a problem? Well, what can they do? Ask them, not me. All right, so the problem is throughout the city, whether you're parked, your house is right next door to the ER. Like, my little apartment I lived in was right next door, across the street from Trinity's emergency room. Holy smokes! The sirens were going every day, five, six times a day and night, and I'm going, how can anybody sleep? They aren't coming after me or anybody in my building, but you know, I understand the problem that exists, but it isn't something today because Providence House moved into town. It is most likely because forty years ago or longer, there wasn't something like that to help people, to feel comfortable to go to and say, I need help. Can you take me where there's some food? I need help. My kid doesn't have any shoes. I know that sounds like a dire strait situation. They got it into themselves. A lot of them don't. And a lot of them isn't even booze or drugs. It's just a bad situation, and they're stuck in it. And without these businesses that are, places that are called businesses, nothing can be done about it. My family, I'm the only one that isn't an alcoholic. But I'm the one that's accused of being one. That's a great, it's fine. I'll deal with it. But when you have a Providence House and another one, the people that don't want those places, I don't think the residents that are complaining here, with legitimate complaints, yes, their safety is imperative to them. But the people who don't want those houses are the very ones who sell the drugs, who sell the stuff to the kids, who get the vapors, what do they call it, vapes, smoking things, dished out to the kids. That's why there must be a stream from what, that hill down to M and H. Why? M and H is probably twenty-four, seven again. You can't stop that, but it's a congregate where, you know, I'm not a cop, but if you pay attention, where do they find these people and follow them out to where they make the stuff? Use your common sense. That's those place. And I'm sorry, I lived in that location too, but I was stuck having to live in a location that was close to every office job I had downtown because I didn't have a car. I wasn't a druggie. I wasn't a drunk. I wasn't anything any worse than that either. I just didn't have a car. Okay, does that make me one of those, or does that make the, there goes the neighborhood? I don't think so. It's the situation that's throughout the entire community, and Minot's not the only one like that in North Dakota. But without these houses, the people that are providing the garbage to the ones who are addicted or caught in a trap where, how do they get out of it? They're the ones who are going to oppose it more than the ones who want sincere help or safety for their kids. I understand. I, I don't want you to know what I would do to someone who hurt one of my kids or I saw something happen. But that's why they're pestering the legitimate residents. They don't want that Providence House anywhere in the city. It can be right next door to the police department and a nice couple living next door, and they'll pester the pants off that nice couple just to get that Providence House or group home out of here. That's how serious it is. It isn't a few people who went out and drank too many and got in trouble. It is a, it's a corporate business, more than your grocery store or the liquor store. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman Ofodol, I have a letter that I received that I'd like to read after this gentleman.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commission members. I live two houses east of this proposed shelter halfway house, whatever you want to call it. Our neighborhood is old. The house I happen to live in is over a hundred years old, and there's a lot of them much older than that. One concern we have that has not come up tonight is property values. What happens to, you know, the value of my house or my neighbor's house when we get outfits like that and somebody's looking to buy in their neighborhood? They're going to look at that and think, well, gee, I don't want to pay that much because look what's next door to me. So, and I realize folks need help. I'm all for that. We're not against that. I've lived in the neighborhood ten years, and when we first moved in, there was three kids in the neighborhood. Now there's fifteen kids within one block. The whole neighborhood has, a lot of us are retired. Some have passed away. Some are in the nursing home, but the whole neighborhood has undergone a change. So within a block of this proposed place, you've got, you've got fifteen children, most of them probably under the age of twelve. There might be a couple that are, that are a little bit older. So to me, that's a concern. We've already got the three shelters, the two on Main Street, and then the Ward County Juvenile Center on Eighth Avenue, which is not always occupied. I think it depends if there's runaways or whatever they happen to bring in there. But anyway, I feel we've been blessed with enough places. I realize this gentleman has already bought the place. They have painted it, which makes it look better. They put a deck on the front of it, which I guess for aesthetic reasons, which, again, it improves it. My, my concern, I think it should be limited to six people. I don't think we should go for ten. I don't think that house is big enough. And frankly, if I was going through treatment, I would not want to be sharing a room with somebody else that was having problems. So another question that, that I think this gentleman should answer, who finances and who's paying for these people to get these treatments? And how much does it cost? I think it must be pretty lucrative because all of a sudden they're popping up all over the place. But I, I'd really like to know just where's the money coming from and how much are we paying? Because it's got to be tax dollars, so, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, this is a letter from the Becker family. They live at seven ten Second Street Southeast in Minot. They wrote this letter to me on August eleventh of twenty twenty-five to the City of Minot Planning Commission regarding the proposed group home at six twenty-four Main Street South, case number twenty twenty-five dash thirty-three. There are six single-family homes, some with small children, between our house and the proposed group home on the corner of Seventh Avenue and Main Street. In the former times, we could walk down Main Street to the Empire Theater. We have enjoyed living in the neighborhood for the last forty years. We hope that you choose to protect, to protect this special place. I would like to thank the Planning Commission and also Mr. Lane for the opportunity to comment on this project. I know that providing input on the permitting of a group home is done by exception, not the rule in the city of Minot. Three years ago, a group home was placed adjacent to the backyard of our home. Dealing with the city on the matter was very disheartening. There was no public notice, no hearing, no input, no choice. This is a loophole in the zoning code that needs to be fixed. All homeowners are at risk. I would like to suggest, request, or even beg that you do not put another group home in our neighborhood. If you have not been here, think historic like Eastwood Park. Unfortunately, I'm pretty sure that is not going to be the case. So to get what we can get done, I request that you make some changes to the proposed conditions for approval as outlined on page five of the staff report. Report number eight, restrictions should be beefed up. Who defines a violent criminal? How many times did the police have to respond to the group home before it is a problem? Does the city have a good track record for dealing with problem properties in the neighborhood? For example, about a block away on the corner of Eighth Avenue and First Street? Report, comment number nine, the standard for exterior maintenance needs to be defined. Unlike owner-occupied homes, other units are a crapshoot and tend to be less well-maintained. All litter should be unacceptable. Are they going to mow the grass on schedule or wait for a neighbor to call Public Works? Is salty snowmelt from the parking lot going to drain into the neighbor's yard? Are they going to paint the building a reasonable color and/or provide new siding? A promise to be a good neighbor is not good enough. Report item number ten, the sign says no parking allowed on the street in front of the proposed group home. The corporation behind this project has already paved the backyard of this once majestic old house. They should belly up and use their facility, period. They can be a good neighbor and not park in front of any of the nearby homes. Thank you for your time and consideration. I hope you can find it in your heart to treat our neighborhood like it was your own. Steve Becker.
Thank you. Was that the only letter that we got?
Chairman Ofodol, yes, that was the only written correspondence I got.
All right, thank you. All right, Mr. Lane, I believe that you got a few questions that were asked. If you choose to answer them.
Chairman Ofodol, Commissioners, a lot of questions there. I'm not sure I remember them all. So the main thing that's standing out to me is the concerns of the monitoring and what that looks like. And I completely understand that. Like I said, the stigma of addiction's still alive, and so unfortunately, there are some not well-run facilities that do happen to be in that neighborhood and that are in the state of North Dakota. So I can tell you what ours does. So like I said, the thought process behind this place being here is that it's two blocks away. The opposite of addiction is connection. So, so being that we can be close to each other and being that you are two blocks away from your primary counselor, who has brought you this far, this is not day one treatment. This is the place where you go to continual levels of care, where you move through this, where, where you work, you, you, you continue to get better, you continue to grow, you continue to blossom in this thing and this reunification with your children and having your kids to come visit you. So the day-to-day operations, I'm just gonna give an example. So you need to be, if, if you are in this level of care, you would need to be at the facility at Providence House, two blocks away. So they are going to be walking down the streets. They are going to be going to treatment. They are going to be going there. We are two blocks away from the treatment center, which is about a half a block away from M and H. In our philosophy, we don't run from drugs and alcohol anymore. We're not afraid of it. It's everywhere, everywhere you go. If I was running from it, I would, the problem would be everywhere I go, there I am. I'm the first thing that comes out of my suitcase. So I need to learn to deal with this. So at eight, you're gonna show up at a morning meditation. You're gonna do gratefuls. We're gonna talk about the things why we're grateful today. These things that are happening in our life that we're not living in hell anymore, that we're not dealing with these problems, that we're walking through this together. And then you're gonna have a little break and then you're gonna go to about nine o'clock to eleven o'clock. And this is at Providence House. You're gonna go to group there, group therapy, and then you might have a one-on-one with your counselor. And then you're gonna go from the one to the three after that. And then, and then the, the walk back home. And then they'll come back at, depending on what's going on, at seven o'clock or eight o'clock. So you are gonna see me in your neighborhood. And I can tell you from experience, from going from the men's center to the women's center, it's a world of difference. You get to hear the women giggle. You get to hear them laugh. You get to see them get their skin tone back, their sparkle in their eyes, the happiness, the tears, the crying, the laughter. And that's the greatest thing ever. So you are gonna see me in your neighborhood. We don't take sex offenders. We don't take violent offenders. We're taking people who really wanna change. We partner with the state of North Dakota. They gave us a grant. They asked us to open this up because of our program and what we've been doing. So it's an honor and a privilege for us to be able to provide services here. And like I said before, and I remember these meetings too, we wouldn't be here if the problem wasn't already here. We wanna be the solution. We wanna continue moving forward with our initiatives. And so some of the, the concerns, I understand, i- i- if you've never been in addiction or you've never been around it, yeah, it's, there's, there's a lot of undertaking going on here too. But some of the concerns as far as the neighborly things like that, I would make a suggestion, I will give you my phone number. If something's going on there, I wanna know. I don't care if it's two in the morning. If it's one of our girls, give me a call. We have people that are all over right here. Be there in five minutes, if not less than that. If there's an issue, we don't want that. And that's not what we stand for. And that's not what we're gonna do with this place. That's not what this is about. This is a place of healing and a place of, place of growth. And that's what we're trying to promote here. It's, it's not loud parties. Like I said, there's a curfew. Lights are out at eleven. There's not people running around. And as far as the yard space goes like that, yeah, that's because most of the time the women are in, in treatment or most of the time the women are working. That's what this looks like. It's a safe place for me to lay my head. It's a safe place for my kids to come visit. It's a safe place to be together. That's what this thing is. The opposite of addiction is connection. And that's what we're trying to promote here. We're not trying to take over your neighborhood. We're not trying to bring these problems to your neighborhood. We're trying to bring a solution that's there. And as far as the, the M and H and, and the things that are going on in that neighborhood, we're not affiliated or associated with any of that stuff. And I ask that you don't please put that on our back because it's not what we are.
Okay, uh, two questions I have here that maybe you wanna touch base on, just from my notes of people coming up here. Uh, a lot of people ask, limited to six people, why ten? You know, uh, why, why not the six? Why not? And I'm sure there's a reason why you wanna, you're, you're asking for that.
Yeah, because the need for it. Yeah, we have exponential, exponential use. People, women are wanting this program, wanting to be here. We have women who are waiting. We have women who are waiting to get here, who are begging to come in here. We have other programs around the state sending us applications from their treatment centers to get these women here. We could probably open four more and probably fill those two. But we don't have the staff. We don't have the resources to cover something like that and be able to monitor appropriately.
I, I thought I heard you say twenty-four people on the waitlist earlier. Is that, okay. And then the other one, maybe you just wanna touch base on, because it kinda was brought up on, uh, how, how does a, how does a lady get accepted to this program? Like what's your steps to get into this house? I mean, they're not coming right from the jail and going right into the house. There's a process to get into that house. Is that correct?
There's a seven-page application that goes through there. That's gonna tell about your history of substance abuse. It's gonna tell about your criminal history. That's gonna have your emergency contact, contacts on it. What type of medication you're on, who prescribed it, who your doctor is, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. That goes to the house manager or that goes to the case manager, or that goes to myself, or that goes to the Morgan or Haley. And it, and it's, we staff it from there and that's the way the intakes are done. Generally, these people are coming from our facilities. Like I said, this is a long-term model. This is just a part of the process. This isn't where we're bringing day one people who are running out the door and who are going on major issues. These are people who are working towards sobriety, who are living in sobriety and recovery today.
Okay.
Chairman, I, I've just sort of, I, I, I guess I do applaud these efforts. And too often, there's a belief that these people should be shunted away to someplace where we don't see them. Whereas a more reasonable approach might be to normalize the reality that they inhabit, uh, for the benefit of all on one level. But what I'm hearing here from this community also, and we've had several people come up to start group homes, et cetera, and there's been a lot of antagonism in the neighborhoods, ultimately not for a lot of good reason. But this, this group has shown a lot of empathy and a lot of concern and also identified a, a reality that's unique to this neighborhood, a, a lot of these sort of homes in this, in this area, which, and I would just recommend this. Um, you talked about your telephone number. They can always call you. But I, I guess I would suggest that there's a, there's a need for this particular group to think about more outreach on your part, uh, on the part communicating with the neighborhood. I, I've got rentals, uh, almost all the problems as a result of not, uh, communicating. And it, and it might be that, that for your endeavors here, that there's a need for a greater communication with, with the neighbors here.
Yes, sir.
On your part, not just
Thank you for that.
receiving calls, but outreach.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Public hearing is still open? Yep, come on up, sir.
Needs locks, by the way. So I'm Rob Michael. I live at seven ten South Main. I've been there for twenty-three years now.
Can you maybe pull the microphone just a little closer?
All right, there we go. Yeah, sorry. Um, uh, you know what? I, I applaud Mr. Lane for what he's doing for the community. First, I just wanna say that. Um, and I also agree with, with, uh, Mr. Kibler that that you, a lot of this would have been solved if you would have reached out to our neighborhood, right? And explained this process, what you're planning, what you're doing, as opposed to going in there, painting the house, tearing it up, you know, and we have no idea what's going on until we get something from this commission saying, hey, we're gonna put in a group home. That was just the first part. Um, like everyone else has said, there is a drug problem in our neighborhood, right? Um, the stairway, it's essentially First Street where it goes down to, I don't know what street that is, Ram, Ramstead, I think. That, that is like a homeless and, uh, drug superhighway in between Henry Towers and the other one. Um, and you said that the, the women will be walking in the neighborhood, right? Correct? I know it's only two blocks between there, but all day long, there are people that are either trying to sell drugs or just wanna cause trouble in our neighborhood, as is evidenced by the break-ins. I mean, I'm not saying that this group home will contribute to that. However, I think that's a significant impact to what you're trying to do. And I also have to reflect everyone else's concerns about our property values. And I'm not saying just your group home. The, moving Washington School out without saying, hey, we're gonna do this, or, you know, the hospital's gone now. The saturation of group homes in our neighborhood, and I understand wanting to be two blocks away and it makes it easier. But at what point do you say, you know, ten group homes is enough in the neighborhood, or fifteen, or twenty? I'm, I'm not saying the residents are bad people. Please don't think that I'm saying that, Mr. Lane. We come from a family that has addiction as well and understand it and understand the difficulty in maintaining a sober lifestyle. We all understand that. So please don't think that we're saying these people. That's not what we mean, right? I, I think I reflect that from everyone that's in here. We're not, we're not trying to cast a stigma. We're just trying to look out for our neighborhood and the traffic that could possibly come in. Uh, again, with the drugs and crime that are related, not to your house, but people that are drawn to group homes and vulnerable individuals. All right, that's all I have, so.
I appreciate it.
Yep, thanks.
Chairman Ofadell, if I, if I could, um,
Absolutely.
We're, we're hearing a lot about the, the group homes in the neighborhood. Just so to clarify, Seeds of Eden has a conditional use permit to operate as a group home. The Endeavor Sober Living, um, Treatment Center has a conditional use permit. Um, the Towers are not licensed group homes. Those are just low to moderate income housing. Um, that's a residential use within a high-density residential property. The city has no regulatory authority over that and it would fall under fair housing, uh, federal fair housing laws as far as who they're allowed to and disallow rentals to. Um, I just wanted to clarify that those are not group homes. Uh, I, I just wanna clarify the definition of a group home as defined in our LDO is very specific and focuses on operations like Mr. Lane's where they are bringing in groups of people for cohabitation and are being treated and/or assisted in their living in some way. Um, the low to moderate income housing in the area, they're receiving no services, they're not licensed by the state, they're, it's just a low to moderate income apartment building essentially. Um, whereas these group homes have to be licensed by the state of North Dakota to operate. So I just wanted to point out the distinction. We're kind of loop, lumping a lot of different properties into group home. And we, as a commission and staff, are focused on the definition of group home under our land development ordinance, which is an operation like Endeavor Sober Living and not low to moderate income housing developments or flop houses. There are a couple of those in the area that staff and code enforcement are well aware of. Um, the fires at those properties were brought up earlier in the conversation. Neither of those are group homes. Those are known drug properties, both to Minot Police Department and our code enforcement officers, but they are in no way operating as group homes and would fail on every level to be licensed as a group home. Um, I just, I just wanna clarify that as the commission assesses this conditional use permit, that we are looking at this as a group home under the definition of group home in the land development ordinance.
Okay, thank you. Public hearing is still open? Oh, you're okay?
Um, sorry, I'm not trying to be here all night either. Um, so my question is, and it has not much to do with this, but could grow to be a concern. Um, knowing that Seeds of Eden specifically has had multiple situations where police have been called and have showed up to this house, does that not count as violations for, because I guess that's gonna be something that's gonna get cloudy for me. If they've had multiple issues, how is that not going against their permit? And if ultimately it leads us like, okay, if this one were to have those issues and we're calling those police and they have the, like, you see, I'm
Yes.
pairing without it. Like if we know this one's having a lot of issues and it's still running and operating and hasn't had any permits pulled, how do we know that if we have issues up here, it's not gonna be the same thing where it still gets to run and have its permit and just continue to be a neighborhood issue, I guess. And that's more to you guys versus him, because that's more of a city situation.
And, and without knowing the complaints upfront, but maybe, maybe you can touch base on this?
Chairman, we can't comment on any potential investigations that would be going on on other properties, especially when weighing the consideration, this, that's a separate operator. We can't weigh those against this operator.
And I fully understand that. It's just setting an expectation in my brain of, okay, if we know that this one, I'm not asking what the complaints were. And that, that doesn't matter. I just know that they have been called to the house on numerous occasions. Ultimately a violation, I would assume. Uh, maybe I'm wrong. And they're still operating. So how do we know that if this property has similar issues without telling me what they are? How do we know that that house isn't gonna get shut down if we've already seen that this one hasn't been? You see?
There's an investigation process that has to take place across multiple city departments and we can't comment on that.
Okay, so it's just not there yet. Got it. Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I could just ask Mr. Diedrickson that. I think this is, is, is important. Uh, so like a coding violation that might be reported to us or to your office is different from a police call to a residence. So is it, is it true that a residence could have multiple police calls and still it would have a clean slate in terms of coding violations?
Chairman Ofadell, Commissioner Kibler, a zoning or code violation, it would be investigated by the code enforcement officer. If there was merit to the investig, to the complaint, she would open an investigation, which would result in an enforcement case being pursued. Um, that's very different than a criminal investigation. Um,
So the two don't know about each other?
I, I guess, I, I don't, I, I mean, I'm no expert on the subject, but not every time the police show up has, it's a criminal investigation actually results in a criminal charge. And I can't comment on why dispatch would send a law enforcement officer to a property. And I have no access to the police reports from those visits. I can tell you about code enforcement because I, as the code enforcement officer supervisor, do have access to those. Um, and I can tell you that if her investigation finds that there's merit to the complaint and they, and it results in an enforcement case being opened. Um, yet that's usually, the first step there is a letter to inform the, the, the property owner, you're out of compliance with the other municipal or land development ordinance code. Um, better than ninety percent of the cases are resolved with a single letter. Um, some are not and are taken all the way through the code enforcement process to what's called abatement, which is essentially where the city deals with the problem for you and charges it to your tax bill. So if there any place in between there, the problem is solved. I, it's not a fast process because the abatement, a lot of times folks look at the property and say it's garbage, but it's still their garbage. And you can't be deprived of your garbage, even your garbage, without due process. So you, there's a process that it goes through. But we do take all complaints of code violation very seriously and they are thoroughly investigated.
Thank you.
Okay. Public hearing. We'll go a little la, last call here for anybody that wants to speak for or against. Anybody wish to speak for or against? Okay, with that, I'm gonna close the public hearing. And I'll turn it over to the commissioners for a motion.
Chairman, I guess I would move to a Chairman, I guess I would move to approve this move to ten in this house. And at the same time, I would just recall what I see as a real need to communicate with people in this neighborhood as a, as almost a warrant for existing in this neighborhood. But I, I move to approve based on staff finding of facts and with all recommended conditions.
I'll second.
Okay, we had a motion to approve by Commissioner Kibler and a second by Commissioner Trudell? Okay, that, any discussion? And I'm just gonna, I'm gonna follow up this, this real quick before we get into discussion and just let you guys know, I appreciate everybody coming out here and talking about this. This is a tough, tough discussion. Mr. Lane, you've been through this a few times, so you understand, you know, from the neighborhood and the, and the not in my backyard mentality that a lot of us have. So I appreciate everybody being cordial and respectful and talking, you know, and, and bringing up your points. Also, I wish you guys would thank all the commissioners here. We kind of got a little leadway here because we rolled in a, a bunch of properties into this one conditional use permit just for Lane, you know, so, Mr. Lane. So I appreciate everybody having, allowing me to have the leadway a little bit and allow everybody to speak. We, we could have pulled the reins back at some point and just focused on this one CUP, but we kind of, we wanted to hear the whole situation. So I appreciate that. So that's the two statements I guess I wanted to have. And with that, we'll go to any discussion on the motion on the floor. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, then we'll call the roll.
Iverson?
Yes.
Kibler?
Yes.
Menham?
Yes.
Oferdahl?
Yes.
Pontanila?
Yes.
Trudeau?
Yes.
Amick?
Yes.
Doctor?
Yes.
Ziegler?
I have to abstain from this one because I live two houses away.
Motion carries.
Okay, we're gonna move on to item five point seven. And I'm gonna modify the description of this five point seven because it's quite intense. Are you okay with that? And I will just read the beginning here. So we got a public hearing request by Brian Billingsley, Community Development Director for the City of Minot for text amendment to the land development ordinance of the City of Minot. The text amendment covers multiple sections and I will allow city staff to go through the multiple sections unless you would prefer me to read them out loud.
Chairman Oferdahl, it's okay. I have a list of changes on the next slide.
Okay. I appreciate it.
So we have a, a summer cleanup, so to speak, as we had a no planning commission in July. And so we came up with some house cleaning options for ten things. The first being, and I'll go through each one individually. So don't, don't feel like they're gonna be all grouped together. We can also offer to do each change, vote on each change individually instead of trying to group them all together and you're trying to remember what is back in chapter two point two when we've gotten to chapter thirteen. I would, I would offer that up if, because we have a lot of.
The commissioners have mentioned in the past that it's, this is a very long text amendment. We, we are more than willing, we can just do each amendment. You can vote, make a motion to pass each amendment individually, yea or nay, move on to the next. So we're not trying to deal with that volume.
Are we able to maybe just poll one as we go through? If there's one that we want further discussion on?
Absolutely.
Chairman Oferdahl, yes, we can do that too.
Okay. And then what's the wish of the commission? It doesn't matter to me if you wanna vote on them as a group. If you wanna go through them as a group and then poll one if there's something that you wanna dive deeper into or if you wanna vote on either or every one individually. It, it truly is, it's up to the commission that whatever you feel comfortable with.
Even though it's late in the day, I, I guess I would vote for looking at each of these individually and giving some thumbs up or thumbs down on each one and sticking on the ones that for whatever reason are a little gnarly and that we need to look at more.
Okay.
Okay, that is the wish. We're gonna vote on each one individually. Is that what I got out of that? Yep?
Yeah, that seems to be the consensus, yes.
Perfect.
All right, we will start with change number one. Change number one is the public or P district use addition for warehousing and daycare centers for chapter two point two. This change was planning staff initiated to fix some inconsistencies with our table of uses. The, the specific changes are that we noticed that daycare centers were somehow not allowed in the public district or the general mixed use district and that warehousing in the public zone was also disallowed. This would very heavily impact operations at, say, Public Works or the landfill or any other of these public districts that, that warehouse large amounts of material. We did not want to make it a public or a permitted by right because there are some public districts where this would absolutely not be appropriate. I've circled the, the changes in red and put arrows to them. These are the spots where, are the only four spots where we would have changes to the table. You can see they're in red and underlined. And with that, I'll stand for questions.
Any questions for city staff? Okay, do we open a public hearing then, I suppose, for each one of these?
We have to.
I guess.
Chairman Oferdahl, we are required to have a public hearing on, on zoning ordinance text amendments.
Right, so when we individually one will open, okay? So with this, then I'll open the public hea, or any questions for staff? Saw none? Okay, this will open the public hearing. Anybody in attendance wish to speak for or against this agenda item? Anybody wish to speak for and against? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and turn it over to staff or for commissioners for a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Kipler, Kibler, seconded by Commissioner Doctor. Any discussion? Okay, call and roll.
Yes.
Kibler?
Yes.
Menham?
Yes.
Oferdahl?
Yes.
Pontanila?
Yes.
Trudeau?
Yes.
Amick?
Yes.
Doctor?
Yes.
Ziegler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, with that, we'll move on to change number two. Change, change number two is to our definitions chapter specifically for the definition of a family. It is legal best practice for cities not to try to define or limit the definition of a family. And therefore we have removed two sections. One, that deals with relations of people. And two, limiting the amount of people that could be in a family. We feel that as the family is referenced in the land development ordinance over ninety-nine times, mostly in our districts that distinguish between single family, multifamily and so on, that it is still worth having a family definition, which is why we didn't just strike it all together. We seek here to simply define it as a group of people who live together as a single housekeeping unit. And that, that is how we would then distinguish between, say, a duplex with two housekeeping units in it versus, say, a single family. And all the little distinctions that go along with that for how our zoning code is set up. And with that, I'll stand for questions.
Any questions for city staff? Seeing none, I'll open the public hearing. Anybody wish, in attendance, wish to speak on behalf or against this op, or this agenda item? Anybody wish to speak for or against? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and turn it over to commissioners for a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion to approve by Commissioner Menham, second by Commissioner Kibler. Any discussion? Any discussion? Okay, call and roll.
Iverson?
Yes.
Kibler?
Yes.
Menham?
Yes.
Oferdahl?
Yes.
Pontanila? Trudeau?
Yes.
Amick?
Yes.
Doctor?
Yes.
Ziegler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, with that, move on to change number three. Change number three deals with cargo containers. Cargo containers have been popping up and due to their price and their economical means of storage have become more and more popular around town. And our code enforcement officer initiated this, this change as our current land development ordinance uses a lot of confusing definitions for it and a lot of confusing names with no actual definition. And so we'll be adding a definition into chapter two point three that just says cargo container. A metal contain, metal crate designed to store goods for freight transport, typically by ships, rail or other types of transport. Staff has picked this definition because then that singles out the steel corrugated containers that you usually see sitting in parking lots, especially by hotels and things of that nature. To continue with the change, we would like to modify chapter six point one, which deals with outside storage of equipment, materials and inventory. In subsection five, you see that we call them storage boxes, crates or other units. We seek to clean this up a little bit and simply call them units utilized for the purpose of storage and protecting materials from weather, such as cargo container, which now has an official definition, are considered outdoor storage and such storage needs to be screened, et cetera. Continuing on with the chapter six point one. In residential districts, we do not seek to prohibit, say, contractors from using them as onsite storage, which is very popular among the home builders. They would be allowed during a construction project, for example. However, we also seek to just outright prohibit them in residential districts as they are temporary in nature, yet being used as permanent storage. And the aesthetic of a corrugated metal box in a residential district, the, the two just don't really go together. We don't, we do not want this prohibition to apply to anyone outside city limits, however, as we feel this is a more of a city of Minot aesthetic that we are trying to set up here and not one that should apply to people outside city limits. And with that, I'll stand for questions.
Any questions for city staff?
I have a question. On B five? We refer to them as storage boxes, crates or other units again? Shouldn't that just be units utilized?
Oh, I see. Yes, I found it in section A and I forgot to mark it in section B. I will change that to include the same definition in, as commercial and public districts. In industrial districts, it will read the same. Thank you for catching that.
Thank you.
Any other questions for city staff? Okay, seeing none, we'll open the public hearing. Anybody wish to speak for or against this agenda item? Anybody wish to speak for or against? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Turn it over to commissioners for a motion. Move approval.
I'll second.
Chairman Oferdahl, could I, Commissioner Doctor, could I get you to include in your motion the additional change as pointed out by Mr. Amick? It, it needs to be included in your motion that you're, a, a, a motion to approve with the change as proposed by Commissioner Amick to the industrial district. I'm sorry, just splitting hairs, but we need that to stay.
Motion to approve with the condition changed by Commissioner Amick previously.
Thank you.
Yep.
I'll, I'll still second.
We got motion to approve by Commissioner Doctor, seconded by Commissioner Amick. Any discussion? Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, we'll call the roll.
Iverson?
Yes.
Kibler?
Yes.
Menham?
Yes.
Oferdahl?
Yes.
Pontanila?
Yes.
Trudeau?
Yes.
Amick?
Yes.
Doctor?
Yes.
Ziegler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
With that, we'll move on to change number four. Change number four deals with the noise buffer overlay. That was that hashed blue zone you saw in the Lena edition. The map on the left-hand side, which is now in red hashes, is how our noise buffer overlay is currently set up. It primarily sits over the large runway that, where the commercial airliners fly in. It does not sit over the smaller runway for general aviation. This change was suggested due to issues identified by airport staff. It will affect chapter two dot two four. There is currently an airport, airport noise buffer overlay, which is in effect. Our specific changes add a code of federal regulations fourteen, part seventy-seven, which deals with the safe, efficient use and preservation of navigable airspace. The form is required to provide notice to the FAA about possible obstructions. All sections of the noise buffer are currently already in the approach area, which is a protected area for airport operations. So this simply adds in a reminder to those who live in that zone that they need to be talking to the FAA. It simplifies what noise sensitive uses are and it removes a somewhat arbitrary distinction between twenty-five and thirty, or twenty-five and thirty decibel noise reduction categories, making it one category simply for homes where it used to have a commercial and industrial designation as well. And then we have a section B that describes airport, airport nuisances and codifies them. And section C, which ties the overlay chapter better into our land development ordinance, porting people to the correct sections. Just to give absolute crash course on what an airport overlay protection area looks like. It, are those green sections there are your approach surfaces? Those are usually the ones dealing with the runways. And then you have a, a horizontal surface which extends around the airport and then a conical surface that goes above that. The graphic on the right kind of shows it's a big bowl. You can think of it sitting around the airport. So anything that pokes up into the bottom of that bowl can't go past those zones. And so the graphic is small, but in the horizontal surface, things above a hundred and fifty feet or in the conical surface, things above three hundred and fifty feet. Those are the things we're targeting here. Most residential homes or industrial, commercial operations don't go to those heights. We're talking about antennas and church spires and thing, or cooling towers of like an industrial operation, for example. So here are the, here are the changes for chapter two point two four. It is quite extensive. Mostly, I won't go through each one individually, but like I've described previously, we, under section two dash two four dash two, we talk about how we've codified noise sensitive uses as housing, public and private institutional uses, daycares, both home-based and centers. Any other table, any other use that's not in table two point two will not be considered noise sensitive. So these capture all the, the places usually where people will live or people who are like in, in the hospital, for example, are forced to be there. Like, it covers them as well. We've added the must comply with FAA height restrictions as dictated by fourteen CFR part seventy-seven. We've removed the building, under the building design requirements category. We've cleaned all that up and that's what sits in the noise sensitive uses. So I've turned that, instead of a large paragraph, we've just turned it into a bulleted list. One change here that was not in the staff report at the time that I submitted it was that proof of noise reduction is required to obtain a building permit. After consultation with the building official, he informed me that the building code for North Dakota does not actually adopt a lot of these sound regulations. And so he would not have a mechanism to actually enforce it. And in addition, the amount of insulation that's required in homes of our climate gives this level of noise reduction just by default. And so we feel that while it is good to have these regulations in here to demarcate that they are indeed under a noise buffer overlay and that they can expect airplanes to be flying over their property and potentially disturbing them, most of the regulations we have, we already do, which is, which is fortuitous for us. B deals with the codified limitations on the noise buffer overlay. These mostly deal with nuisances to the airport. Any creating of communication or navigation interference making it difficult for pilots to distinguish between airport lights and others, resulting in glare in the eyes of pilots using the airport, impair visibility in the vicinity, create wildlife strike hazards, otherwise endanger. otherwise endanger, interfere with the landing, takeoff, or maneuvering of aircraft, and potentially cause detriment to the airport operations by emission of thermal plumes, fumes, dust, smoke, and a creation of other negative influences. Most of the accidents around airports are either on takeoff or landing. And so that noise buffer overlay zone is very important that we maintain the control required to ensure the safe operation of the airport. And then section C ties in non-conforming uses, appeals of administrative decisions, enforcement of any code violations, and the conflicting provisions clause to our LDO with specific sections listed to make it easier for the public. I know that was a lot. With that, I'll stand for questions.
Any questions for city staff? Any questions? No? With that, we'll open the public hearing. Anybody in attendance that wishes to speak for or against this agenda item? Anyone wish to speak for or against? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and turn it over to commissioners for a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Amick, second by Commissioner Kibler. Any discussion? Good. Okay. Seeing none, call the roll.
Iverson?
Yes.
Kibler?
Yes.
Menham?
Yes.
Offerdahl?
Yes.
Ponte Nila?
Yes.
Trudell?
Yes.
Amick?
Yes.
Dr.
Yes.
Ziegler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
With that, we'll move on to change number five, which is another airport overlay zone. Whereas the noise buffer overlay exists already, this is entirely new, and I want to really underscore that, that this zone is not in use currently. This change was suggested due to additional issues identified by airport staff. It will create a new chapter, chapter 2.25. There is no runway buffer overlay currently. This text amendment will only create the chapter. There is no existing runway buffer overlay. This overlay will have to be added to the official zoning map by zone change, which will be enacted at a later date. So the reason why I say that is this runway buffer overlay is far more restrictive than the noise buffer. So in the noise buffer, someone might have to apply just to see if they interfere with the FAA height restrictions. In this, we actually add use restrictions and navigation easements. This zone is designed to be right up abutting a runway. In the next slide, I'll show you exactly which two runway parts we're talking about. So right where you see these runways is basically Broadway, if you know where the North Hill Coodova is, or Pinkerton's Animal Hospital. That happens to sit right in the approach zone for the general aviation runway. And then further up Broadway by around Delta Vacations is where the other approach surface roughly is. And while we talked about the horizontal and conical surfaces before, the ones we're talking about now are the transitional surface, which is that darker purple on the graphic on the right. And these heights do go down to the point where you will run into problems with trees, for example. You can see on the left-hand graphic there, in fact, 8-71 is a tree that is too tall and now needs to get cut down. So these are the kinds of enforcements. So it's very easy to have something that could interfere with these operations because of the requirements for landing that the FAA imposes on the airport. And so being able to control these land uses is paramount to, A, keep people from gathering right next to airports, airport runways, and to just ensure smooth operation. As part of your agenda packet, you'll see there's an FAA letter of support that simply denotes how the FAA feels about these regulations and how, as the land use authority for the airport, it is up to us to ensure that it is properly enforced through regulations such as these.
I could, just a question, are there people already in these zones who would then be in violation as a result of this new ordinance?
And like I said at the beginning, this is a new chapter, so there aren't any violation... There are problem properties that the airport would like to see slowly transition away from what they are. I'll let the airport director come up if she wants to, to talk about any specific ones.
Chairman Offerdahl and members of the planning commission. Yes, there are a couple of properties in this area that are currently... The FAA is not happy with the land use that is currently being used in there. Our intent on this particular chapter of the zoning ordinance would be, we're not going to make that company, that organization, or that individual move from the property. But what we would do is create an navigation easement so that when that property is vacated, there's an opportunity to change that business, change that property into a better conforming property, a property that the FAA would not have, I guess, heartache over its current use. These areas, this is considered, the FAA calls them runway protection zones. These areas are the areas where a lot of aircraft accidents, if they do happen, there's a 99% chance that they happen in a runway protection zone. And so places of gathering, like a church, or a school, hospital, those are types of businesses that are not conducive, and the FAA recommends not having those type of businesses in those locations. Apartment complexes, you know, where there's a lot of people, and there's a potential of an aircraft accident. The other, the one particular issue that brought this to the forefront was literally the changing of the ownership of the Pizza Hut to a Domino's Pizza. The FAA was not happy that it was going to continue to be a place of congregation, a restaurant. So, you know, those type of things are things that we're trying to avoid. In addition to that, there's the continued height restriction, as you spoke about in the previous things. The trees don't necessarily need to be cut down, but they do need to be trimmed so that they're below that Part 77 surface.
Mr. Chairman, are you taking questions?
Yeah.
Or concerns? Have you discussed, then, what happens with a property that needs to be repurposed, and as a result of that, repurposing loses value for the current owner as a result of this change?
I have not really discussed that. That's not my necessarily purview, per se, but...
Chairman Offerdahl, Commissioner Kibler, it would be an overlay zone that would slowly phase out any non-conforming uses. We can get into the actual changes first, I think would help frame this discussion a little bit better.
What would it be, the use of eminent domain to phase out? I'm just curious.
It would not require the purchase of property. I mean, that is the most surefire way to control any zoning is to just own it. In this case, that would become prohibitively expensive to the city to have to buy that much more property. And so zoning overlays become the preferred tool.
I would say that historically, the courts have ruled that enforcement of zoning is not a takings, if that's what you're asking, especially when you're taking legal non-conforming and then requiring conformity after change of use.
So wouldn't that then just put the burden on the property owner? Because they're going to change what their land can be used for? So that's going to have an effect on when they want to sell it?
Chairman Offerdahl, Commissioner Trudell, that is true. Zone changes do have the effect on what your property can and cannot be used for, and may or may not have an effect on the property's value. But again, the courts haven't ruled that's as a taking. It's just land use regulations have that effect on properties.
Seems like that's kind of just an end around to paint the property owner the corner and dictate to them what they can and can't do.
Commissioner Offerdahl, Chairman Trudell, yes, our use table does that already for every property in town.
I was going to say that primarily what zoning does, yes, it does dictate land uses, permitted conditional land uses, what you're allowed to do and not do on your property based on its zoning. This would add another layer of zoning and regulation on these properties that fall underneath this overlay zone.
Let me continue, though. I'll explain the changes a little bit more and see how you feel about them. So the ones that would be defined as noise-sensitive would be disallowed. So in this zone, which, again, does not exist today, and we're not putting it in place today, that discussion, when it happens, the landowner would be notified of it. This isn't something that can be done without any kind of discussion. It would be for all housing uses, public and private institutional uses, and daycares are the ones that are just outright not allowed. In commercial zones, you don't normally see housing, or public and private institutional, I mean, you can see daycares. So as for the overall reduction in what they're allowed to do, say, because this is right along Broadway, which is mostly commercial, it would require conditional use permits for food and drink establishments, retail sales, both small and large, and commercial recreation. So it doesn't outright deny those commercial uses. It just adds the conditional use over the top, like we heard today, which doesn't say no, but it does add conditions. Those conditions would be the navigation easement.
So it just adds more bureaucracy to people?
It does, yes. It does in the name of public safety, as we get to choose how much of this zone goes and how big it, and how much it is. Is it just right up next to the runway? Does it go 100 feet in, 200 feet? You know, those are the discussions that the community gets to have. This is simply just taking our toolbox and adding a new tool to it, but not necessarily deciding to use it.
This is a text amendment to add this into the zoning ordinance amendment, into the land development ordinance. In the future, a much larger and community-engaging discussion would have to be had on where this is actually going to be placed on the map. We are not asking you to place it on the map. We are just, at the request of airport staff and with the support of the FAA, creating this text that would allow for this zone to be placed on the map and enforced. Again, we need to do a great deal of a community engagement, especially with the property owners in the area of the airport, in this area specifically, as to where these requirements would actually be placed on the map and what properties would fall underneath of it.
So if I understand it correctly, and so what we're asking is, right now, the homeowners or property owners could do what they want, and we want to add some text so that the property owners have to come and ask for permission to do stuff with their property?
Chairman Offerdahl, Commissioner Trudell, right now, they can do on their property what is allowed for them to do under their current zoning district. So it's not that they can do whatever they want. They just, they're allowed to do anything that they're permitted to do in their current zoning district. If this were added to the map, they would be allowed to do anything that they're allowed to do in their zoning district that's not prohibited by this overlay or requires a permit. So if someone wanted to do one of, say, food and drink sales, we wouldn't necessarily say, no, you can't have a food and drink business. We'd just say, you can't have a food and drink business with a pole sign that's higher than 25 feet. We might just, all we might end up doing with their conditional use permit is, right now, they're allowed to have a pole sign in food and drink that goes up to 40 feet in a commercial district. Airport might say, 40 feet's too high for a pole sign in this area. They can do that, but their pole sign can only be 25 feet tall.
Right. But the airport's been there for a while, and the signs haven't... So the current stuff is working. We just want to make it more, potentially, and then have them ask for a conditional use permit.
Commissioner Offerdahl, Chairman Trudell, the current, I would not say the current process works very well. It does, it will not catch things. The airport is going to get boxed in, like it is already almost completely surrounded. You have apartment buildings on the other side of it on the northeast. You've got more high-density housing just off the general aviation runway. You've got commercial, which is going to get redeveloped, and as Minot grows to the north more, it's just going to get more and more. Now, the airport has bought most of the property that deals with the commercial runway, the big, long one. But what will happen is, as the area builds up more and more, it will create the potential for more conflicts. So right now, it might just be that tree or that Domino's, but in the future, we're trying to protect the airport from encroachment. Now, the airport has been there a very long time, you're right, but so have the nuisances. I mean, Pinkerton's has been around since, what, the 60s or the 50s? Some very, a very long time. And so as these properties start to change over and North Hill starts to get developed, we feel that this is a pertinent step to protect that investment, because if we don't, and then the FAA comes back with more and more regulations for our airport, and then we're not able to take commercial airliners anymore, that would be a huge blow to our airport.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I guess if there's an extant property that, under its current zoning, has freedoms that will be restricted with this new zoning buffer, then it seems to be any sort of discussion, community discussion involved ought to also involve a buyout of those properties at their current values, as opposed to a restriction on their usage and a restriction on their financial validity.
Chairman Offerdahl, Commissioner Kibler, they would be a non-conforming use, as of right now, since they exist already. These would only apply to new things happening in those areas. To Commissioner Trudell's point, though, the second that they try to sell that property and the zoning overlays are over the top of it, it would add new limitations to the next property owner.
Okay, thank you. That I...
Mm-hmm.
Well, we got to talk.
I'll keep going if there are any more questions.
Let's finish with the...
There's just one more page, and it just deals with "Avigation easements shall be required at the discretion of the airport director or their designee. If and as navigation easement is required, it must be recorded with Ward County before a building permit is issued." We have the same building design requirements that were found in the noise buffer overlay, and the same section C, which deal with the airport nuisances, and section D, which is the miscellaneous provisions, which is the same as the noise buffer as well. With that, I can stand for questions for the overlay district.
Any additional questions? Seeing none, I'll open the public hearing. Anybody wish to speak for or against this item?
I do have a question. We actually own some land to the north of the airport, and after the flood, somebody wanted to build houses, and the city would not let them because it zoned something. It's not commercial.
Chairman Offerdahl, I would need to know what the zoning is.
It seemed to me like it had to be warehouses or something like that. It seemed to me like it had to be warehouses or something like that.
Then it's likely zoned industrial.
Yeah, that's what it is. So what would this do to building on that property? What what would it mean?
Chairman Alfredo, Ms. Ness, this won't do anything in its current form. It is simply just a framework or a scaffold to.
But once it was put in, what would it mean?
It, those uses aren't listed in here. There are no industrial uses that would would potentially be impacted unless they, again, hit that height requirement that it sits over all things that are next to the airport already. The uses that we're trying to deter are ones that bring lots of people together. So like, like a store, everyone, you know, full parking lot, everyone's going in, or a daycare center.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, sorry.
I do understand that we don't, I mean, no one likes to be the ones who restricted development. But when a commercial airliner crashes into it, we're gonna be glad that there wasn't hundreds of people there. That's that's the thinking of the FAA here. We are trying to keep large groups of people out from underneath of where ninety-nine percent of aviation accidents happen, which is takeoff and landing. You're most likely to crash on takeoff and landing. And let's, the the goal is keep large groups of people out from underneath of where the planes are taking off and landing. I mean, it it's it's a safety issue, and that is why the federal government has these regulations in place and pushes the land use regulatory authorities to to have these types of regulations in those areas. It's a very small percentage chance that it could happen, but there's the opportunity for much larger loss of life if it does happen and we allow these land uses underneath those areas.
Okay, public hearing still open? Anybody else wish to speak for or against this agenda item? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, turn it over to Commissioners for a motion. Looking for a motion to approve or deny this requested.
Make a motion to table this particular item till we could discuss it at greater length?
Chairman Alfredo, Commissioner Kibler, it is at your discretion to to do, to table, to deny, to accept.
That's my motion. Make a motion, do I have to?
Well, we currently have a motion on the table right now, so, yep.
You wanna make a motion, I'll withdraw mine.
I make a motion to deny.
Okay, so we have a withdrawal of the motion from Commissioner Kibler. And the current motion on the table is a motion to deny Commissioner Trudell. I guess we would need a second. Okay, no second. Still looking for a motion. Guess we're gonna have to, yeah, we're gonna have to make a motion one way or another, even if we wanna second it here and and have a discussion and then vote it out or or if we wanna go back, or if we wanna go back to your mo, your original motion. Okay?
Second it so we discuss it.
Got a motion by Commissioner Trudell, we got a second by Commissioner Kibler. Discussion.
Chairman Alfredo, if I could, a a motion to deny would actually be a motion to recommend denial to the city council. It will still go to the city council for a vote with a recommendation of denial from the planning commission. If you were to make a motion to table it, we could bring it back to you at a future text amendment time cleanup group, and you could then get an opportunity to ask more questions, discuss it further. Just kind of clarifying that you're making a recommendation to the city council whether to approve or deny this text amendment. With a recommendation of approval or denial, it goes to the city council with a recommendation of tabling. We would just remove it from what was brought to the city council for further discussion.
Thank you.
Mister, Mister Chairman, Mister Diedgerson, somewhere seems to me we also floated the idea that when we deny a motion, that we offer a reason. I think it was at a different planning commission. That that we don't, i- if we were to deny a motion, we would deny a motion because.
On a text amendment, you would not need to provide your own findings of fact as to why you denied or recommended denial. However, if we are gonna bring this to city council with a recommendation of denial, it may, I would advise you to send with it a, to the city council, a reason why you chose to recommend denial, so that the city council understands your reasoning behind the recommendation of denial.
So I got a question for. Do we get in trouble with the FAA for denying this now? Do we open up any door? Not really?
We are required per our grants, our grant assurances, to protect the airspace surrounding the airport for, in particular, our approach airspace. These part seventy-seven surfaces are a requirement of of the city to protect in order to be in compliance with our grant assurances. So, yes.
For for grant reasons, right?
For grant reasons.
Yes, so if there was an incident or something, we're not on the hook here for denying this and.
Well, potentially, we might be on the hook if there is an accident. And then, like, we allow a a building, a structure, to penetrate that airspace, which is one of the many things we're trying to protect here. So, I mean, you you look historically in the most recent past, some of the aircraft accidents that have happened. You know, they've run into, in India, there was one that ran into a hospital just off the end of the runway and had some serious injuries and fatalities related to the individuals in the hospital, so.
I have a question. So does it increase the risk for the people if we change Pizza Hut to Domino's?
That was my discussion with the FAA member because in my mind, we're going from a Domino's, which is, I mean, sorry, a Pizza Hut, which is a sit-down restaurant. So you have more likelihood of congregation to grab and go Domino's. But he's still, the FAA, the individual from the FAA, still had a lot of heartburn about that decision to allow the Domino's to. It wa, it wasn't necessarily the change of ownership, but the the fact that there was a building, a structure being replaced, per se, that he had issues with because it wasn't, it's in the runway protection zone. So if you wanna go back a couple of slides, I can. So the runway protection zone is the light green area on these these surfaces. And and like Dan said, we own the property off of our primary runway, but we don't own the majority of the property off of the the, what's called our crosswind runway, which is usually used by general aviation aircraft. But in the event, like, a couple of weeks ago where we had to close the primary runway, our commercial jets do use the crosswind to take off and land when the weather conditions are right or when our our primary runway is closed for whatever reason. And so what the FAA mandates that airport owners do, which is the city of Minot, is make sure that we protect that land and protect anything that's built in that area to limit the risk to human life and safety and property damage.
So when the airport was rebuilt, did did something change that now Domino's makes it unsafe?
I don't, I don't think there was any difference. It's just that the notice of the construction made its way to the FAA. Like, I didn't even know that it was being switched up or the building was being modified, but the individual from the FAA did and and called me.
Seems, is this a lot like flood control, where we really can only assent to an inevitable federal mandate?
Yeah, I mean, it it's one of those things that, for whatever reason, the city of Minot has never really protected that airspace the way it should have been initially, so.
Basically, to me, the FAA is mandating that we do this so we keep our grants in operation?
That is correct, yes. That's one of the things that should have been done many years ago, but unfortunately.
Well, it it looks like Corbin has something to.
All right, Corbin.
He's gonna play us a song list here?
All right, so for those of you that haven't met me, I'm Corbin Dickerson. I'm one of the assistant city attorneys here. So what Airport Director Ekman is referring to is some of our grant assurances that we have. A lot of times you'll hear council talk about federal dollars with strings attached. Unfortunately, federal funds are good. They help build things like our airport, which they did here. But they have a lot of strings to that as well. So when you get some of that federal money, you have to comply with certain things for public safety. So when she says number twenty-one, what it is, it's compatible land use. And what it says, when it says it, it references the airport or the airport sponsors, that it will take appropriate action to the extent reasonable, including the adoption of zoning laws to restrict the use of land adjacent to or in the immediate vicinity of the airport to activities and purposes compatible with normal airport operations, including landing and takeoff of aircraft. In addition, if the pro, if the project is for noise compatibility program implementation, it will not cause or permit any change in land use within its jurisdiction that will reduce its compatibility with respect to the airport of the noise compatibility program measures upon which federal funds have been expended. That's a lot of words. So essentially, kind of what it narrows down to is when you receive the federal funds, we have to do our best, whether it's purchasing the property or through zoning to protect those areas where the big ones like approaches or takeoff areas where crashes can happen. And, you know, how do we do that? So a lot of the Supreme Court and other courts have consistently held, so we talk about zoning and we talk about taking, we talk about eminent domain and things of that nature. So they've said that zoning based on this is not a per se taking. So it's not you're taking someone's land and getting rid of their opportunity to have financial gain on it or any uses. So the uses that are there now will maintain and be grandfathered in. So a lot of the courts give deference to federal agencies like the FAA in these situations. And a lot of them have held that they look at on a regulatory taking side. They look at if there's any financial gain that could be had from that. So what is that? Could it be like agriculture? Could it be a storage area? Could it be something? What a lot of it comes down to is, hey, the police powers of the city outweigh being able to have something that would have been a future use, essentially is how they look at it. So they pretty much held that there is some type of economic viability of that land. If it, unless it strips all economic ability to use that land and all value, they don't see it as a regulatory taking based on the police powers and the safety of the individuals is how they view it.
If half of it, it's okay.
Yeah, that's kind of how, that's, you know, half of it or more, there's not really an actual test, but I understand what you're saying.
My my understanding of this is not, this is just kind of phase one of just putting the the verbiage in, right? But then this gives us the opportunity in the future to review what's gonna go in the place if there's new ownership to decide if it's beneficial or not with the airport in that direction, right?
Yeah, Chairman Alfredo, that's correct. This is just creating the tool that we, as the owners of the airport, should utilize to protect that airspace.
Right.
Eventually, the conversation will have to be had. Where is this going? What properties will it cover? It will be very important to engage those property owners so that they're aware of what's going on. But this doesn't actually place this restriction on any property now. It just creates the text to do that. And I understand we're splitting hairs here.
Well, I agree, but it but it means we're we're moving it closer to that before the people that are gonna be affected are gonna be notified and have and talk about it.
Chairman Alfredo, Commissioner Trudell, this this was publicly noticed. At the packet was, it's not that we haven't done our due diligence for public notification that this zoning ordinance text amendment is happening. It's just we we can't mail a letter to everyone in the city of Minot every time we do a text amendment. So we post it, we put it online, we make it known that this is where you find this information, and people that are engaged know about it. Once we get to the point where we would be talking about actually placing restrictions on property, everyone would get letters, actual letters sent to the property owners directly notified that their property would be impacted.
Yeah, Mister Chairman, Mister Diedgerson, I wonder if, I just don't know if it would be our purview to make a recommendation to the commission that anybody whose land and usage was impacted adversely by the zoning change should be compensated accordingly, that that would be a recommendation. Obviously, we have no power to do that, but that seems like a reasonable recommendation to to compensate people when the zoning changes on their property that limits its value.
Chairman Alfredo, Commissioner Kibler, it would be prohibitively expensive for us to compensate every property owner that is restricted in use by their zoning district. That that would mean that anyone who has a single-family residential property in the city of Minot could come in and say, I can't build a factory on it, so pay me the difference between my single-family home and the factory I want to build.
That would be private enterprise encroaching on residential structure rather than a federal enterprise, which is a little different, isn't it?
We we, as far as I know, we operate private air carriers through our publicly owned airport. I I'm not, Chairman Alfredo, Commissioner Kibler, I'm not trying to argue with you. What I'm saying is, is that long ago, it was established that zoning regulations placed on a property are not takings unless those zoning regulations inhibit any use of your property. That is the regulatory takings that Corbin was discussing. If you have a viable economical use of your property, it's not a takings. And the precedent that we would compensate property owners for the difference between the value of their property under one zoning district to another would lead to, like I said, my, my, the property my house sits on would be a lot more valuable if I could build a factory on it that manufactured whatever, that city doesn't owe me the difference between those two.
Thank you. It does make me think that I would like to talk more about that, this issue here, rather than make a recommendation to it, against it. Because there are a lot of philosophical issues that that hang on to this kind of decision that adversely affects people that we may not ultimately control, but it might be good to have the discussion.
Ultimately, this one was brought to us by FAA. These properties need to be protected for human life and safety reasons. These properties need to be protected for human life and safety reasons. We are operating commercial jets over top of these properties, they're landing at an airport the city of Minot owns, and if there was an accident, we need to do our best to protect the lives of the people that may or may not be congregating underneath those approaches. That is what the federal mandate they've given us.
None of that language has to do with compensation, though.
No, it does not.
Can I? Navigation easements at other airports I've worked for, the airport has paid the property owner to, to lease the airspace, for lack of a better term, that's one of the things, that's one way that it can be compensated is through the navigation easement and that agreement can include compensation. Maybe not
Purchased all of his land.
May, maybe not the equivalent of purchasing the land, but it, it provides a, a minimal amount of compensation to the landowner underneath that airspace. So that is
Except for that minimal bit. Minimal compensation.
Yeah, it, it, it depends on the community and depends on what, how the navigation easements are written, but there are there are opportunities that the airport could, and tools the airport can use, um, provided in, in a navigation easement, so. The, Corbin and I were whispering here while you guys were having another discussion, but the, the question we would have, if, if it is tabled, um, what type of information would help this commission to make a more informed decision, what are we missing? Um, and we can help provide that information.
I, I just sort of think at, at the top, and I don't want to delay it, I'm getting blithery here, but it, it does seem to me that like a discussion concerning whether or not in terms of planning and zoning, our priority is to, um, emphasize and protect municipal structure over residential structure, for example. Or municipal foundational buildings over, um, individual ones. I, I don't, I don't know the answer to that, be kind of nice to find out if we're really here to serve the municipal ends of the city as opposed to the ends of all the residents of the city. That's a discussion, it seems to me that pains to this.
Any, but no, that's, that's all good points. I, I think they're just trying to protect more place of gatherings than they are anything else. My apologies, we are, the, the public hearing is closed, so we're in an open discussion, I apologize. We currently, we have a motion to deny the recommendation to city council, and we have a second. Any further discussion? Everybody's back, right? Yep, okay. Guess if there's no further discussion, um, I, I, I get confused on this one a little bit because I'm, I'm just gonna play, um, I'm just gonna play, uh, I don't know what we call it, anyways, I, I go by the Domino's next week. This is implemented, I would just have to come to the city and get a conditional use permit to open up another Domino's or a Pizza Hut there, right? So it wouldn't restrict me from opening up what I wanted there, it would just restrict me that I would have to come in and explain what I'm opening up. And y- you guys would have to make recommendations like any other conditional use permit on what you would accept, am I understanding that right?
Chairman Offidol, that's correct, there may be additional conditions added to the requirements. Lower your sign. You're only allowed to have four tables in, in your restaurant, so that, that, not a large number of people congregating, things. Things of that nature, to avoid health, uh, life and safety issues.
Okay. That's what I wanted to clear up. Okay, any further discussion?
So just one question, so whether we vote yes or no to pass the motion? It's simply a recommendation to the city council, correct?
Correct. City council may, may find more value.
We vote yes on, on his motion to deny it, the city council can decide to pass it or do what they want to with it. About the property values.
Correct. Any further discussion? Go ahead and call a roll.
Iverson?
We still have a quorum, quorum without.
I was gonna say, oh, no.
We may have lost.
Kibler?
No.
Menem?
No.
Offidol?
No.
Pontanila?
Epstein.
Trudell?
Yes.
Amick?
Yes.
Doctor?
No.
Ziegler?
Epstein.
Motion fails.
Then since we have to do something, I would make a motion to table.
Still have the option to table or motion to recommend approval.
Right.
I guess I'd like to hear more about it instead of trying to do it now, being new at all of this and stuff like that. I'd like to learn more about what they're trying to do. I mean, I understand the FAA is saying we gotta do something, but I'd like to understand it better.
And from what I understand, like the chair said, that no matter what we do today, the council can make their own decision as far as that's concerned. But we're not saying that the people that live there, potentially live there, their rights are gonna be taken, but they're just going to have some zones put on them and they would have to come to us for rezoning, right?
Outside of a discussion with no motion, but they, we, again, we're not actually placing this on the map. Any, we are not restricting even one lot with this vote, we are creating the text that going forward creates an overlay district that would be used to protect these properties the way the FAA would, requires us to for our grants.
So I'll make a motion to table.
I'll second.
Commissioner Amick, motion to table, second by Commissioner Kibler. Believe if we table it, then there is no discussion, right? We're just go, we just call the roll? We discuss on tables?
There'd be no discussion to table. It would just be a vote.
Yeah. Hey, there's been a motion to table, second by Commissioner Kibler, motion by Commissioner Amick, call the roll.
Kibler?
Yes.
Menem?
Yes.
Offidol?
Yes.
Pontanila?
Yes.
Trudell?
Yes.
Amick?
Yes.
Doctor?
Yes.
Ziegler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Perfect, and we can work on trying to get them more information, I think it just got, yeah, we'll, we'll work on.
Chairman Offidol, what we will do is provide the research that Mr. Falconer used to fashion this proposed text amendment. Uh, we can work with the airport director to, uh, the FAA puts out what's called circulars, and it contains all of the information on what are the expectations of the land use authority as far as protecting these areas, and we can get you as much information as you need.
Appreciate it. We'll move on, I got, I do have one recommendation, though, on these upcoming ones, let's, uh, let, let's let city staff go through their finding and report, and then we'll open it up for discussion. That way we don't get a little sideways going, asking questions halfway through and throwing these two young guys under the bus a little bit, huh?
Thank you, chairman, I'll continue now. Um, charge, change six deals with group homes above six people, it will impact chapter two point two and chapter four point one. This change was planning staff initiated as requested through public comment to change the cap of twelve people on group homes to accommodate when larger structures are used for group homes. This amendment will, will remove the twelve-person cap currently placed on group homes and instead replace it with a scaling cap based on safe occupancy. In residential settings, it will be set by a person-to-bedroom ratio, and in commercial building settings, it will be set by safe occupancy as determined by the fire chief or their designee. Here is how it will affect the text. In our use table, table two point two, the group home, which currently says seven to twelve, will be replaced with just a seven plus. No other, um, permitted or conditional areas of a change. And we will add to section four point one dash four for housing. Occupancy for group homes located in residential dwellings, single-family or multifamily are restricted to two adults per bedroom with a single exception for an additional resident in the primary master bedroom as determined by the planning division. When a conditional use permit is required for group homes located in commercial buildings, the allowed occupancy to be based on a recommendation from the fire chief or their designee after review of a detailed floor plan provided by the applicant, providing square footage, means of ingress and egress, and any other relevant information as requested by city staff. Our thought here is, as we heard tonight, group homes going into residential areas can be very disruptive to them, into the neighborhood cohesion. Allowing the group homes to get larger units allows them to move into higher residential, uh, higher density residential areas where things like parking kind of evaporate because they get a whole apartment building. You get a parking lot with it usually, and so these, these uses are more compatible. Um, as was stated before, group homes are quasi-commercial use in a residential area, and moving them into a higher density residential area is putting them in a more compatible environment. So, this, this change helps direct and kind of alleviate the pressure on single-family homes used for group homes.
If I could add, the applicant for the group home tonight currently owns an apartment building that I believe he is still operating underneath the capacity that it could be. And again, we go back to he's got a waitlist, and if he could use an apartment building to increase his capacity, um, I, I won't say this for everybody, but as a general rule, people who live in apartments don't care who their neighbors are because they change every six months. Um, people who own single-family homes in single-family neighborhoods, they do. So, um, we're moving this into a far more conducive environment to operate these group homes. We're encouraging them to move, we're not forcing them to, we're encouraging them to, to buy properties in areas that are less likely to cause friction with adjacent property owners.
And with that, we'll stand for questions.
Any questions for city staff?
I guess I do.
Yes, sir.
So, basically what this is gonna mean, the house that is currently being turned into a group home, the master bedroom is now slotted for four people to be in it. This would take us down to two. So hence, we wouldn't have ten people in the house, we would be going down to six, seven?
Chairman Offidol, um,
That's what I'm trying to understand.
Commissioner Ziegler, right, it, it currently, uh, his, his, uh, conditional use permit was approved with the motion for approval of this council, and those entitlements are in place. If you were to pass this, his, that would be legal non-conforming, but he would operate under a conditional use permit that allows him to have ten people in that house. Um, that is already approved. This would have changed the dynamic of that single-family house, again, I will go back to, the goal is to encourage these to be operated out of commercial-type buildings, to encourage them to buy fourplexes and sixplexes and uh, single-family, single-family homes, they would be a little bit more restricted in single-family homes than they are now, but they would be less restricted in the larger properties. If, does that answer your question?
Yeah, I just wish this would have came up first.
It's important to understand that this is a recommendation to city council and zoning ordinance text amendments will be required. A first and second reading to pass city council, uh, this is still, even with the recommendation of approval, uh, about a month and a half from actually being coming ordinance.
Probably October, beginning of November before they get a second reading.
Okay.
Soon as first meeting in November, yeah.
Understand.
Chairman Offidol, um, Planner Dietrich, would this, um, come up in, the limits come up in the conditional use permit as it's written, or as a condition?
Yes, so the maximum occupancy for a commercial building would come to you as a recommendation. It says fire chief or their designee, but it comes from our fire inspectors. We would bring it back to our fire inspectors and they would assess that commercial property and say, this is how many people can safely egress this in our response time to that, you know what I mean, it's by square footage and and building code and fire code is gonna dictate the maximum occupancy of, of a commercial building. Commercial buildings are, and apartment buildings are designed to get more people out more quickly. Residential properties are designed for family homes, now they have their own egress rules. Um, so we would limit it to two per bedroom, now, we all know families that have more than two kids, and you got big families in a four-bedroom house, I mean, you might have three kids, two in bunk beds and one on a, a regular, yeah, but we, from a safety standpoint, are saying maximum oc- maximum occupancy should be two residents per bedroom. Now, sometimes the master bedroom is three times bigger than your other bedrooms, sometimes it's the same size. Um, that's why that's kind of left up to my discretion to make a recommendation to you, but ultimately, you as the planning commission could say, no, we don't think three people can fit in that, and we're not gonna give them an extra person, so instead of ten, they get nine, you know?
And then, even if it is an apartment complex, it's still gonna come to us if it's over six, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Uh, I, I would put as a caveat to that, not if it's in C one, C two, or central business district, public or general mixed use. Though, those districts, these larger group homes are allowed, permitted by right, so.
Be more residential.
The, the conditional use comes in in those residential areas. The commercial, running a commercial group home next to another commercial business has a low chance of nuisance being generated. Running one of these next to other residentials does.
Any further questions? If not, I will open up the public hearing. Is there anybody in attendance that wishes to speak on behalf of this agenda item, behalf or against?
Commissioner Offidol, city commission and planners. I'm just confused, if you go that two point two where they can have seven plus, why can't they just move into a house, make bedrooms, and have as many as they want?
Chairman Offidol, um, it, it still has to meet building code. Uh, buildings are required to have a kitchen, they're required to have living spaces outside of just bedrooms. No, you couldn't just move into a single-family home. Now, you could buy a single-family home with an unfinished basement and add additional bedrooms or something, but in building code, there is a minimum square footage for a bedroom. There's also egress requirements, they, they'd have to put an egress window in the, uh, two, two methods of egress for each of these bedrooms. So you can't just pack unlimited bedrooms into a single-family home, they would all have to meet building code.
I think if you're gonna change it to more than seven, you should specify that that's for commercial. Commercial setting instead of just leaving it open to residential, because if somebody was not a good operator, I think they could work around this.
Chairman Offidol, if, if you were to purchase a six-bedroom house. Chairman Alfredo, if you were to purchase a six-bedroom house, you know what I mean, one would assume that that it was constructed to, you know, building code. If it's a code-compliant six-bedroom house, I don't want, we don't wanna restrict their, the owner's ability to use that property. My concern here is, is we would be encouraging these operators then to purchase the starter homes that Minot so lacks. We have a huge deficit in starter homes, that you're starting a family, that middle, we always talk about the missing middle in housing. If we restrict them to six people and they get two per bedroom, they're gonna start buying all the three-bedroom houses, because there's no reason to buy a four or five-bedroom house.
But if you're trying to get them to go to commercial settings.
But we're also not trying, and I apologize, there is another planning consideration that's very high on the planning department's issues that City of Minot has, and that, we had a whole housing study that just provided our massive deficit in that missing middle housing, those three-bedroom starter homes for the new family.
But what does that have to do with this?
If we limit them in residential zones to six people, they will buy three-bedroom houses. We would be encouraging them to buy the type of houses we are lacking. Because if they can only have six people and two per bedroom, they're gonna buy three-bedroom houses. And those three-bedroom starter homes is where our largest deficit in housing in this city is. So, we could find ourselves exacerbating another problem.
Public hearing's still open, anybody else?
Commissioner Alfredo, commissioners, I remember being a big proponent of this when we had this conversation over a year ago. This would give people like myself clarity and transparency on moving forward on things like this. The current apartment complex that we operate now is limited to the conditional use permit. However, that's not applicable anymore as it's going to be housing mothers and children. And so, we feel that putting in exorbitant amount of people in there is not conducive to recovery or the childlike environment. But something like this going forward would definitely send me in a different direction as far as that goes. I would like to maximize the space that we had available to us without the restrictions or going through a bunch more of these hearings like this. So, if something like that, just in my limited view of the City of Minot, would definitely help us move forward in a commercial zone. Thank you.
Chairman Alfredo, if I could, Mr. Lane is not the only operator that we've heard from. There are vacant apartment buildings and hotels and all of those different types of commercial structures that are available, but it just doesn't pencil out when you can only have four residents, or 12 residents maximum. Like, why would you buy and rehab an old hotel building for this type of group home if you can only put 12 people in it and you got 25 rooms in there? You know, it becomes, but these are in commercial zones, like surrounded by big box stores, and the potential for conflict is incredibly low in these areas. We're getting them out of the neighborhoods and into commercial areas, and we're rehabbing commercial buildings that may not be economically viable, like to turn into a hotel again. We've specifically had DRTs on, and you guys know which hotels I'm talking about, and we'd love to have them rehabbed. There's been interest, but when we tell them, oh, you can only have 12 people in there, well, I'm not gonna spend a million and a half dollars to buy the thing and another half million dollars to rehab it if I can only put 12 people in it, my investment won't pay itself off for 30 years. And it's not just this operator, it's other, many other operators and have looked at these buildings with, this would be a great place, but not for 12.
Chairman Alfredo, to give examples, like the old Trinity Hospital, we were approached about turning that into a rehab center, but here we're gonna follow this regulation, like Doug, Mr. Dietrich said, mention like the Vegas, we've had investors come talk to us about turning those into treatment facilities, and it all gets trapped by this restriction that we have.
And it still states here, if you have a four-bedroom house, you're only allowed eight, right, with the two per bedroom, so that limits that opportunity or that minimizes the traffic then in a neighborhood like we saw earlier today.
Chairman Alfredo, potentially nine if it's got a big master bedroom.
Right, with the exception of one, right, but it does put a master.
But it does, yes, it does further restrict the use of single-family homes, as I said again, with the goal of steering these operations towards commercial and high-density residential areas where there's a lower potential of conflict.
And I think that that goes back to our conversation when you called about, you know, why not get a farmstead and go outside and get a lot of people, I mean, this right here looks like it's steering it in that direction.
Except, wouldn't it make sense to separate residential homes from commercial properties? Like, commercial properties, why can't they have more than 12?
They can.
The Vegas has, they can, so why are you saying that?
They couldn't before, they, if we pass this, they can now. If we don't pass it, then they're limited at 12.
But also, houses could, and if it was an unethical person, they could put 15 in a house.
If they had six bedrooms, right, then they could have 12.
Chairman Alfredo, it would be based on the number of bedrooms, and remember, they still have to come to the planning commission for a conditional use permit and meet all of the conditions that the planning commission places on them. The purpose of the conditional use permit is not only to prevent conflict, but also to weed out bad actors. And as a general rule, the planning department always recommends to the planning commission that group home licenses for conditional use permits be non-transferable. So, that means each individual owner has to come to this commission and ask them for a conditional use permit. If one operator sells, you can't just sell it to a bad actor, he's got, it's non-transferable. He can sell the house that's set up for a group home, but that new owner has to come here and explain their operations, they, there's a lot of meetings that happen with these applicants, with staff prior to us making our recommendations to planning commission.
So, changing it to seven plus doesn't do away with conditional use permits?
No.
That still has to happen. So, like, if I were to buy a house, planning to open a group home, and I went in and put eight bedrooms in an unfinished basement, do I have to get permission to do that first, or can I just go in and build? I buy the house.
Chairman Alfredo, if I would, you would need a building permit to do that, and in order to count it as a bedroom, it has to meet the definition of bedroom under building code, which has a minimum size and egress requirements.
Public hearing's still open, if anybody else, for or against? Seeing nobody come up, we'll close the public hearing, turn it over to commissioners for a motion.
I'd move to approve.
Second.
Had a motion to approve by Commissioner Kibler, second by Commissioner Ponte Nilla. Any discussion? Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, call a roll.
Kibler?
Yes.
Menham?
Yes.
Alfredo?
Yes.
Ponte Nilla?
Yes.
Trudell?
Yes.
Amick?
Yes.
Doctor? Motion carries.
All right, with that, we'll move on to change number seven, which deals with sign code maximums. If you'll remember, back in June, we had a presentation about sign code.
Hold on one second here, I believe we missed a commissioner on the last vote here, so we.
I didn't scroll down far enough. Running out of room.
Ziegler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
We can't make him feel unwanted on his first meeting, can we? Sorry about that.
Oh, no, we apologize, Commissioners Ziegler. Sign code maximums for change seven, I had a presentation that I gave on June 3rd, kind of describing what we were looking to do. To rehash that again in very simple terms, Minot stands out in that it over-regulates signs more than our comparator cities do. We would like to bring ourselves closer in line with, say, Grand Forks and Fargo, in that we remove the arbitrary maximums we've placed on pole signs and wall signs, which constitute 99% of the sign permits that I get, and that we replace it with a scaling designation of three square feet per one-foot lot frontage, or 20% of the building facade, whichever is greater. The reason why we have both is sometimes you have a large lot with a smaller building, or you have a very tall building, think downtown, you'll want to build, you want, our goal is to have the signs be proportional to the building they're trying to advertise. Another change we'd like to make is to this table here, which deals with temporary non-commercial signage. We noticed as we were writing this change that during the special election, technically people were only allowed one sign per their property, which we feel is, again, legally dubious, and we should not be limiting political speech. And so, if they want to put more than one sign in their yard, we feel like they should be able to, as long as they're not creating some kind of safety problem via like blocking sight on a corner. And with that, I will stand for any sign code questions.
Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll open the public hearing. Anybody wish to speak for or against this agenda item? Anybody wish to speak? Seeing no one come up, we'll close the public hearing and turn it over to commissioners for a motion.
So moved.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Amick?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Doctor, any discussion? Any discussion? Okay, call a roll.
Kibler?
Yes.
Menham?
Yes.
Alfredo?
Yes.
Ponte Nilla?
Yes.
Trudell?
Yes.
Amick?
Yes.
Doctor?
Yes.
Ziegler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Change eight, this deals with easement vacations with minor plats. This is, this change was initiated by planning staff as requested through public comment. It changes Section 10.2-13 to allow for minor plats to be vacated, or for minor plats to vacate easements and right-of-way. Staff found inconsistencies between subsections, and we seek to change this not only to make it easier to vacate, like the easement we saw today, had to go through this whole process, whereas if it can go to a minor plat, we can expedite things for oversights that happened a long time ago that aren't large issues. So, we seek to strike out the word "not" so that a minor plat may be utilized to facilitate a vacation of right-of-way, and we add noticing for subsection G where it says, "Request for a vacation of right-of-way or easement, a public hearing must be held at city council and shall involve sufficient notice per Section 9.2-1." Section 9.2-1 covers all our noticing requirements, where we send letters, where we post online, where we put it in the newspaper. Again, this is, this is a way to make it easier for landowners to make small changes to their properties without having to go through such a long, drawn-out process as a major and final plat. And with that, I'll stand for questions.
Any questions for city staff?
Just one, minor changes would be like the two we had tonight?
Yes, all the plats we had tonight were very minor in, but they just happened to cross into a category that made them major.
Any additional questions? Okay, seeing none, I'll open the public hearing. Anybody wish to speak for or against this agenda item? Anybody wish to speak for or against this agenda item? Seeing nobody come up, close the public hearing and turn it over to commissioners for a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Kibler, second by Commissioner Trudell. Any discussion?
Chairman Alfredo, if I could, this would change the process for that utility easement. It's a simple, unused utility easement, and we had to bring it to planning commission for a public hearing and all this other stuff. Moving forward, the direction for surveyors will be, instead of creating a vacation exhibit, just do a minor plat, we'll bring it to city council. The only difference between that minor plat and what a minor plat they see now is that minor plat would go on the public hearing portion of the city council's agenda as opposed to their consent agenda, and that is only because century code requires a public hearing for the vacation of any road or easement. So, we're cutting a bunch of time, we are very much simplifying the process. This particular landowner went through a lot, and it kinda brought this to Dan and I's attention, like, this is a lot to get rid of an unused utility easement on your property. So, let's just make it a simple process, straight to city council, public hearing, city council can make a quick decision on these, especially when we're talking about unused. Just wanted to add that.
Perfect. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, call a roll.
Kibler?
Yes.
Menham?
Yes.
Alfredo?
Yes.
Ponte Nilla?
Yes.
Trudell?
Yes.
Amick?
Yes.
Doctor?
Yes.
Ziegler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Change number nine deals with stormwater plan requirements in Chapter 12.2. This change was engineering staff-initiated as requested through public comment to better streamline stormwater management plans. The changes to Section 12.2-13 allow the engineering department the discretion about the requirements for a technical memo dealing with the de minimis effect on stormwater. That is simply a letter that states it won't significantly impact the stormwater runoff. Normally, they would always require a memo, and now it will be, may be required to provide technical memo with backup data, giving the engineers the discretion to take very trivial situations and not require additional paperwork. And with that, I'll stand for questions.
Any questions for city staff? Okay, seeing none, we'll open the public hearing. Anybody wish to speak for or against this agenda item? Seeing none present, we'll close the public hearing, turn it over to commissioners for a motion.
So moved.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Amick, second by Commissioner Kibler. Any discussion? Any discussion, seeing none, call a roll.
Kibler?
Yes.
Amick?
Yes.
Menham?
Yes.
Alfredo?
Yes.
Ponte Nilla?
Yes.
Trudell?
Yes.
Doctor?
Yes.
Ziegler? Motion carries.
With that, we move on to our final change, which deals with non-conforming manufactured housing in residential districts, Chapter 13.1. This change was planning staff-initiated as requested through public comment to correct an issue with the land development ordinance. The change to Chapter 13.1 will remove the size requirement for replacement of manufactured homes placed in non-conforming districts. What our ordinance currently says is that if you have a manufactured home in a residential district, that means a manufactured home in an R1 or an R district that is non-conforming, it can only be replaced with a manufactured home of equal size. So, this means that any single wide trailer that was there is basically impossible to replace because you can't buy trailers of that size anymore, and also, our mission is to increase these property values, and in doing so, we limit them in being able to put better, more modern manufactured housing on these lots with a right that they already have through their non-conforming nature. We feel this puts an undue burden on these landowners who are. We feel this puts an undue burden on these landowners who are trying to just keep their, um, naturalized affordable housing. And with that, I'll stand for questions.
Any questions for city staff? Any questions, seeing none, public hearing? Anybody wish to speak in favor of or against this agenda item? Or against? Okay, seeing none, we will close the public hearing, turn it over to commissioners for a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we got a Commissioner Amick with the motion to approve, second by Commissioner Trudeau. Any discussion? No discussion, okay, seeing none, call or roll?
Kibler?
Yes.
Menham?
Yes.
Alfredo?
Yes.
Pontenilla?
Yes.
Trudeau?
Yes.
Amick?
Yes.
Doctor?
Yes.
Ziegler? Motion carries.
And with that, you've already seen these findings of fact, um, you've already voted on all ten changes. And so, um, you've done our recommendation, we have no other business.
Must be something else we could talk about.
Let's talk about how freaking cold it is in here.
For North Hill.
I'll, I'll just add one little note, I appreciate you guys going through that, that's, that's painful, I'm sure, to go through all them things and by giving us all the information to the best of your ability, I appreciate it, appreciate the work you guys went on. So, it's the only thing I'll add, anybody else have any miscellaneous or discussion items? Okay, with that, we'll move on to item number seven and adjournment. Meeting adjourned.